I call the February 1st, 2022, closed session meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, would you be kind enough as to give our public directions on how to participate?
Thank you, Mayor. Due to COVID protocols, the public may participate virtually in public meetings. This meeting will not have in-person audience participation, but they can watch the meeting live at fullerton.legistar.com or on Spectrum Channel 3 and ATT U-verse Channel 99. And they can also participate to make public comment via Zoom. The phone number for that is 1-669-900-9128 or zoom.us/join. And the Zoom meeting ID is 978-4219-1797. And all that information is also on the agenda.
Madam City Clerk, would you kindly please call the roll?
Mayor Jung.
Present.
Mayor Protem Whitaker.
Here.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
Councilmember Zara.
Here.
And Councilmember Dunlap is somewhere nearby.
He certainly is. We'll now hear public comment on closed session items. For those wishing to speak on the side of via Zoom, please raise your virtual hand or press 9 on your telephone.
We have no one attending on Zoom at the moment.
We will now recess to closed session. Thank you. I call the February 1st, 2022, regular meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, will you please advise the public on how they can participate this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. Due to current COVID protocols, the public may participate virtually in this meeting. We will not have in-person audience participation. The public can access the meeting at fullerton.legstar.com or on our government cable channels. The public may address City Council virtually by joining the Zoom meeting. And they can do that by going to zoom.us/join or call 1-669-900-9128. The Zoom meeting ID is 978-4219-1797. And all that information and more details on the meeting agenda for this evening.
Madam City Clerk, would you please kindly call the roll?
Mayor Jung.
Present.
Mayor Protem Whitaker.
Here.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Here.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
And Councilmember Zara.
Here.
And we have Reverend Dr. Mandy Yates from the First Christian Church of Fullerton via Zoom to give the invocation. Reverend Yates.
Thank you. Would you pray with me? Loving God, thank you for this day and the opportunity to join with you in creating a better world for all of your children. Guide the leaders of our city. Help them to be awake, aware, and alive to all that is happening around us. Bless them with the courage and strength to be catalysts for change in our time and place. Remind each of us of the beauty we can create and the pain we can alleviate. You know us, God, and you made us. You call us by name. Continue to work with us, in us, all around us, and even in spite of us. We pray this in the name of all that we hold to be good and right and true. May it be so. Amen.
Reverend Yates, would you be kind enough as to give us a few words about your ministry?
Sure. I have the pleasure of serving with the good people of First Christian Church Fullerton, which is in downtown Fullerton, right at the corner of Harbor and Wilshire. We've been on that corner since 1905 and proudly serve the city, trying to help those less fortunate. We've had a long tradition of serving meals to people who are hungry and partnering with you to help do good all throughout our city. So, thank you for your partnership.
Reverend Yates, we thank you for your time. Thank you for your service, and we wish you the many blessings.
Thank you.
As we go forward. Thank you. And this evening's Pledge of Allegiance, if I can call on Councilman Dunlap to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Please rise.
Kind of your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mr. City Attorney, do you have a closed session report?
There's no report this evening.
And do any council members have ex parte communications to report? Very well. Now, we've got public comments. We will now hear public comments on non-agenda items and accept requests to pull consent calendar items. So, Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
We have at least two hands raised at the moment. And Jane Reifer, you should be able to unmute.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. This is Jane Reifer, and I come before you fairly often to ask that we find ways to maintain the charm and the history of our city, but also address the affordable housing crisis. I think there are a lot of people right now who are pretty confused or overwhelmed or both at the number of new housing proposals that are coming into the city. Our new housing element in trying to find our 13,209 required homes actually identifies 30,000 potential new units. And then there's SB 9 that makes it so that single-family home zoning is no longer really that, only a name, where single-family home zoning now allows in every lot, you can build in Fullerton up to eight units on each property. So, that's quite a bit, and that's a change. I think people are, again, are confused or incredulous or disappointed in many cases. So, we're going to put on a community forum next Wednesday, February 9th, at 7:00 PM by Zoom to try and help people understand what's going on, because it's quite a bit. And we think we have a framework that allow people to get the basic concepts. To attend, it's by Zoom, so people can phone or text 714-729-3019, 714-729-3019, by noon on that day, February 9th, in order to get a Zoom link or a phone code so they can participate and learn about this, you know, large and important project. We want housing affordability, but we also want to keep Fullerton Fullerton. We want to do both. And also, I understand that Item 3, that we may be able to pull Item 3 later tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
On the consent calendar.
Thank you. Next caller?
Caller ending 5223, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you, Lucinda. This is Jane Rams. A couple of public participation comments. One is, I appreciate the steady session, the last meeting, but I would like to request that next time, and probably this was intended, that there be more time allotted and that the public have an opportunity to ask questions after the presentation. Maybe for expediency, the public was allowed to comment prior to the presentation. I'd like to see steady session. Well, I suppose it depends on if the council's doing a study session for themselves or for the public and whether or not the council does want to hear questions from the public regarding the study session items. I just think that there would be more effective opportunity to, for everyone to understand some new concepts that are being brought forward in study sessions. As well, with the redistricting process of the three public workshops, there is one more left coming up on February 10th. I'd like to remind people that that is when you can explain to, or communicate to the, oh, I'm trying to think, Dr. Levitt's role is the demographer. What boundaries do you consider your neighborhood and your community of interest and why, so that you have an opportunity to express, an opportunity to keep your neighborhood and your community together so it's not divided up? Especially my neighbors here in downtown Fullerton that were divided up five different ways. I highly like to encourage you to participate. As well, the people who live in current District 4 and District 5, or anyone living south of the railroad tracks in Fullerton, have not participated in any, or either of the two workshops or made any comments. I'd like to highly encourage you to please participate. There's translation available in five languages, if that's a concern. It's what I'd get people to participate as best we can and hope the city can do even more outreach before the February 10th meeting so that we can get even more public input, especially from the areas that aren't represented by members sitting on the redistricting advisory commission. There's no one from District 5. So, I hope that there's some way we can get more participation in that process. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Next caller?
And John Hannah, you should be okay to unmute. John Hannah.
All right.
There you are. Go ahead, John.
Yes. I'm here to speak on, to speak on Number 3, but if the council's not going to pull it off the consent calendar, I won't say anything more. I'd like to reserve my time if it is pulled later.
Indeed, you can.
So, that's all I wanted to say.
That's fine, Mr. Hannah. Thank you.
And we have no more speakers.
Very good. Mr. City Manager, any responses to the issues from the public?
I don't believe so at this point.
Very good. We'll go to, we'll bring it back for council reports. Who'd like to start off? We'll go left to right. Mr. Councilmember Silva.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a lot to say, actually, so I'm not prepared for that. So, we'll pass it on, we'll pass the baton.
You're done. Councilman Dunlap.
Good evening. Would just like to, although I don't need to make the plug, would like to make the plug, that there are lots of little girls in Fullerton selling Girl Scout cookies. You can get them from my daughters. You can get them right across the street from City Hall here. There's a little budding entrepreneur who I think has probably the greatest setup in town every year. Mini boxes, you know, stacked up outside of there. They're around the clog, so would encourage you to support your local Girl Scout troop here in Fullerton. That's it for my comments.
Councilmember, it sounded like a plug to me. Today marks the start of the Lunar New Year. It's a rebirth and renewal in Asian culture. This is the Year of the Tiger, signifies bravery, wisdom, and strength. I want to wish everyone in our community a very blessed and very happy New Year. February 1st tonight also marks the start of Black History Month. Celebrating diversity in our culture is critical to recognize our common humanity. However, it's important to appreciate that depending on what part of the country you call home and the color of your skin, voting is more challenging for some than others. So, I encourage the, our congressional representative to pass the John Lewis Voting Rights Act, empowering voters, allows them to fight back against unreasonable laws like Georgia Senate bill that criminalizes giving water to voters standing in long lines. Lastly, I want to congratulate the L.A. Rams for winning the NFC Championship Game, the last team to host the Super Bowl in their own stadium won. So, I look forward to cheering on the, or our Los Angeles Rams in a couple of weeks. Mr. Mayor Protem, your comments, sir?
No joke, cool?
No joke.
Just one item tonight, the last meeting, Mr. Package, Tony Package, was questioning the lack of information on the Orange County Water District. I wanted to inform people that on the Public Works website and the Water Department, there's a listing of my monthly articles, monthly articles that are submitted and posted there, and they give a much more comprehensive idea of the movement of what's happening during our water year right now and other significant water issues. Also, off my bio, which is on the city website, there's a link there as well, which would take anyone interested to the most current article. So, that's really it for this evening.
Thank you.
Oh, I wanted to thank Anissa for helping to make sure that that was added to the bio.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Zora.
Thank you. Good evening. Again, I also want to wish everybody a happy Lunar New Year, and I hope it brings prosperity and happiness for this coming year. And of course, a happy Black History Month. I hope we can all learn from each other and so we can all create better communities. I had the honor of presenting the Rotary Club of Fullerton, a certificate of recognition and congratulations on their milestone of becoming 100 years of service this year. And it was a great celebration, and they do a lot of great work in our community and will do so for hopefully another 100 years. I also made a visit to the Orange County Fire Authority, which I encourage my colleagues to do so as we are deliberating and considering an important decision to move to them. And in doing so, we, I think, need to do our due diligence, and it was a very informative visit, and I encourage people to do so. And lastly, I'd like to just give an update on our museum. Negotiations with our city are still ongoing, and I hope that we are able to wrap them up fairly soon, so there is clarity. And we are having a new exhibit celebrating, you know, talking about diversity. I think it's always amazing, and I just want to just give you the right information. I'm going to open it up here quickly. So, it is celebrating the life and the artistry of Jose Guadalupe Posada, who really captured the daily life of Mexico City in the late 1800s and all the way through his life until 1913, and influenced a lot of Latin American and Mexican specifically artists, including Diego Rivera, Alfredo Calo. So, we will be having this exhibit. We'll start on the February 19th, I believe. And you can visit the Fullerton Museum Center Facebook page or website to get more information, but mark your calendars. It's going to be a really great exhibit. And on that, I'd like to ask if we can close this meeting in honor of Mr. Mike Clements, who passed away last month and was a pioneer in our city, an advocate for the, our homeless communities and for the disadvantaged and less fortunate, and was a really great friend to all of us and to our city. So, I hope we can close in his honor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Ms. Reifer has polled Number 3.
I move the balance.
With the exception of Number 5, we have an abstention from the Mayor Protem. Can we move the balance accordingly thereafter, sir?
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Councilmember Zara.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Whitaker.
Aye.
And Mayor Jung.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
We have a public hearing item. It's the general plan housing element. That has been continued, but in the meantime, we will hear public comment on continuing this item. If there is any public that wishes to comment, please do so. Madam City Clerk, any comments?
And I see no, oh, we have one hand raised in Zoom.
This is only asked for the motion to continue.
Yes. Mr. Hannah, you can speak to continuance of this item.
I encourage the council to vote to continue this item. It's very appropriate. That's it.
Thank you, sir. All right. I'll seek a motion to continue this item.
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
That's to a date and time certain, which would be when, Madam City Clerk?
Uncertain. Uncertain. We'll have to renotice for this particular item.
Okay. No problem.
Very well. Madam City Clerk, would you be kind enough as to call the roll?
Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Whitaker.
Aye.
Mayor Jung.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
We're on to regular business. We have, it's a default rate here for the Orange County Power Authority residential and commercial customers. Who will be making this presentation?
Ms. Levis.
Ms. Levis, would you be kind enough?
It's on the counter, podium, whatever that's called. It's over there. Make sure it works. There we go. Okay. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The item before you this evening is a review of a default energy product offerings from the Orange County Power Authority for their customers. So, tonight, the City of Fullerton will be deciding its renewable energy rates for itself as a municipal account, as well as selecting a default rate for all customers to be auto-enrolled in. So, a quick background, the OCPA is a community choice energy program consisting of Buena Park, Fullerton, Huntington Beach, Irvine, and unincorporated areas of Orange County. Community choice energy programs provide cities with an alternative to major energy providers, like Southern California Edison, which is the energy provider that serves most of Orange County, which serves most of Orange County and the region. The Orange County Power Authority is expected to launch service to municipal and commercial customers in April of this year. An estimated timeframe to phase in all residential customers in October of this year as well. And back in December of 2021, the OCPA Board of Directors approved the addition of the County of Orange unincorporated areas as its fifth member and anticipates launching its service to all customers in 2023. So, the request this evening before the City Council, as a member of the OCPA, the city must select a default energy product offering for itself as a municipal count, as well as for all customers in Fullerton. The default energy product offering is the power choice that will go into effect unless the consumer makes a different choice. All customers will have the option to upgrade, downgrade, opt out, or opt out and return to service with SCE at any time. So, before you is the official rate structure by OCPA. On January 11th, the OCPA Board adopted its energy rate structure in advance of program launch. And again, customers will receive the default energy product if they do not make any selection to opt out, opt up, or opt down. So, they are auto-enrolled in whichever product this council chooses. So, the three choices are the basic choice, which is a 38.5% renewable energy product, the smart choice, which is at least 69% renewable energy product, and the last choice being the 100% renewable choice option. So, before you is an example, estimated typical residential bill comparison. So, you'll see three rows and three tiers. The first level is the basic choice, and again, this is for the average residential customer. You'll see the comparison between OCPA and SCE, and the final difference being 0%. So, there is not an estimated increase in the average everyday rate for customers if they choose the basic choice option. Moving on down to the smart choice option, folks can anticipate to see around a 3.7% difference in their bill. So, if the average bill was around $114.40, they can expect a $4.25 increase. And then lastly, on the bottom row is the 100% renewable energy choice option with a difference of 5.6%. Average bill might see a difference of 6.38% going with that option. So, what have other member cities done, or what have they chosen? Buena Park selected the 100% renewable choice product for their residential customers and their commercial customers. And for their municipal account, they chose the 100% renewable choice as well. Irvine selected the smart choice blend, which is the at least 69% renewables. And for their municipal account, they chose the 100% renewable choice product. Huntington Beach will be choosing their energy product later this evening. So, whichever the council selects to do.
Anissa, I'm sorry, can we go back, if I may, just, so it says here Irvine selected the 69%, but then it's, there's a final vote to be taken as well?
Yes, I believe they have to go back with a resolution to certify their action. But I believe they gave the direction to choose the smart choice product at at least 69% renewables.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, so whichever the City Council chooses tonight, whatever that default rate may be, prior to and immediately after the shift from SCE service to OCPA service, all residential customers and commercial customers will see four notices, two pre-enrollment and two post-enrollment. These notices will be designed to inform customers about OCPA, about the changes to their upcoming utility bills, and to educate on the enrollment options so that they can make informed decisions. And then staff will be working with OCPA to ensure that additional outreach is done prior to launch. And so, before you this evening are two choices or two actions. First, the City Council must select which default product to choose for residential and commercial customers, that being the basic choice, the smart choice, or the 100% renewable choice. And then the second action would be to choose which product for the city's municipal energy accounts, again, from those three different products. With that, I can take any questions, but we also have Brian, Tiffany, and Max from the Orange County Power Authority on the Zoom call available for questions as well.
I'll bring it back to council for a moment. Any council members have any questions? Councilman Silva.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, on the choices, it's my understanding is that we select something, and then the residents can decide whether to do the smart, if we decide smart, or go lower or go higher, right?
Yes. So, the council tonight will be, basically be choosing what is the first thing that folks are going to see. They're going to be auto-enrolled into the choice that you select this evening. From there, they can choose to opt out, up, or down. So, they still have a choice.
And then, so a follow-up to that, if you don't know, Anissa, maybe somebody on there, what is the, I guess, the rate that people opt out? When cities have done this, and I know that we, Orange County's just starting it, but I think L.A. County or somewhere in California they've had it, what are the rates where the council decides on one choice and then the folks either opt out because they're going to incur an increase or opt in to a?
You're asking for the opt-out rate.
Yeah.
I think Mr. Bobolsky or Ms. Tiffany Law can answer that.
Good afternoon, councilmembers, Mayor Jung. The number is in the low single digits across the state regardless of tier, default tier for opt-out and also for the number of customers that move typically between tiers.
So, once we, automatic enrollment, there's very few who are gonna either A, opt out because they know about it, or opt, or mistake because they don't know about it, or opt out because they know about it. So, which is it? Is it they're not choosing to, or they just don't know, and that's the easy thing to do, to ignore it like, like I ignore my Edison bill?
Yeah, well, I think, I think there's a combination of all of the, all of the above. We certainly have a prescriptive effort in place to reach out to the customers. They will receive four physical pieces of old-fashioned snail mail from us, letting us, letting them know about the Orange County Power Authority, two before, two after. They'll also have a new line item on their bill referencing the Orange County Power Authority. And then we'll be active in the community through chambers, social media, and other city-type events. So, you know, all of the above.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments from council at this point?
I have one.
Councilman Zora.
One question, thank you. So, how easy is it for customers to opt in or opt out? Is it, can people just go online? Is there something where we can work out with Edison where they go to their account, log in, and then click a button and say, okay, I'm opting out? Or is it, do they have to call in and, you know, deal with customer service for quite a bit?
It's very, it's very easy. There are two options. They can call our dedicated call center, which will start operating on February 8th. So, we have agents specific to OCPA that will be answering those calls and talking to customers, so they can do it over the phone in just a few minutes. There is also a form on the website where you really just need your Edison account number and a couple other identifying piece of information. Make your selection, submit, and you've made your change. So, low friction, easy. So low friction, easy to do.
Very good. Mr. Mayor, Protime, I know you had some questions to ask her.
Yes, with this selection, where someone not to pay attention, so many of our residents, despite our best efforts to contact them on any number of issues, we reach a very small fraction of those people. In fact, I don't know if we would have a measure of how many are tuned into this council meeting tonight. Well, my point is that the, the right option here, the default, should be the one that causes the least harm to people. In the event that this council goes in a different direction and forces a change that most people might not agree with, once you're opted in on this, is there any opportunity for them to change down the road?
Yes, so whichever their, the default rate is auto-enrolled in, they'll have the chance to opt in and out. But to your point, yes, they would have to pay attention to those notices and make that change on their own volition.
Yeah, it makes it a clear choice for me to do the least harm. That usually would be my default.
Well, you know, is there a way for us to potentially require an opt-in? I mean, as opposed to, you know, it seems like, you know, based on a lot of the emails and the comments that I've received, the advocacy efforts seem to be very strong, and it seems that, you know, they have no problem getting their message out to the proponents. Perhaps they could then require their supporters to opt in as opposed to, you know, kind of default or de facto opting everyone in and then requiring them to opt out. Do we know if that's an option?
I'll defer to Brian on that one.
Councilmember, the legislation that created CCAs is, requires it to be a, an opt-out. So this is the only way to enroll in a, in a CCA.
Very good. Any other questions from council at this time?
One more, sorry. Is there also, I was talking, forgot who it was, but isn't there a minimum for us to select in order to get the best rates? Because if, if the council, let's say, selects the bottom choice, it, it changes your calculations as far as rates. Am I mistaken here? Or is there something to that effect?
There was an assumption made at the time that this was established, and I think Brian can probably speak to this when you did your calculations.
Mr. Bobolsky.
Yes, so there was an assumption made when the rate design was created that all the member cities would default into the smart choice tier service. If that isn't the case, the smart choice or the 100% renewable, then there's a likelihood that the basic rate, basic choice will end up with a small premium.
Very good. Any other questions or that we have?
I have one more.
Mr. Mayor, Protime.
Our state continues to regulate among traditional power companies like Southern Cal Edison, the percentage at which needs to be renewable energy. So at what point would Southern Cal Edison be expected to provide 69% renewable energy? Does anyone have a timetable on that?
I don't have that on my top of the head. Brian, you do?
I actually don't have that number in front of me. It is at least 2030, I believe.
Okay, so eight years.
Tiffany, have a better answer?
Yes, my understanding is 60% in 2030 and 100% in 2040.
And what is that right now that Edison's doing in terms of renewable energy?
The, the, the basic choice is the, the minimum renewable standard, portfolio standard, so that in 2022, the 38.5% is the number that all, all load-serving entities have to meet.
Very good. Thank you. If there's nothing further, we will now hear public comment on this matter. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public participants that wish to make a comment?
We have several hands raised, and the first one is Patty Tudor. Patty, you should be able to unmute. Sorry, Patty, do that one more time. I got overzealous with my mouse and I think I muted you again accidentally.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, Patty.
Okay, hi, hi. This is Patty Tudor. I'm a citizen in the City of Fullerton, and I'd like to encourage you to think about going to 100% renewable. The reason being, if you looked at the example, it was only a couple of more dollars. And the, the, the main driver for doing this is to, to go to renewable energy more quickly. And I guess statistically, most people do not change their, their default. So why not have people start at 100%? For most of us, the extra couple of dollars isn't what is as important as providing a healthier environment for ourselves and our children. For those that, it, it is a burden for, they can opt, they can, they can lower their, their, their level. So I, I would encourage you to think about the relatively small amount of money difference it is between the 69% and the 100%. And, and also, maybe some of the experts on this call can clarify. I had heard that if we have one of the cities go to the lowest level, it's going to actually cost more for all of the cities. And so that's a definite reason not to do that. So hopefully somebody can clarify that. And that's, that's what I have to say.
Thank you. And I believe the, the CEO of Orange County Power Authority clarified that. Next comment, please.
Okay, Anne Crasian, sorry if I did not quite get your last name, but you should be able to unmute.
Thank you. My, good evening, council. My name is Aine Crasian, and I'm the Orange County Policy Manager for Climate Action Campaign, which is a leading climate nonprofit in the region. We want to thank you for your focus on sustainability initiatives for Fullerton and for joining the OC Power Authority. In the last few days, many residents and local faith, political, and community organizations, including WAVE, the North Orange County League of Women Voters, the Orange County League of Conservation Voters, the Roman Catholic Diocese of Orange County, the Islamic Shura Council of Southern California, and others, have contacted the council in support of 100% clean electricity because this decision has major implications for the health and safety of families in Fullerton and beyond. Climate Action Campaign joins these groups in urging you to take necessary and heroic action tonight by making 100% renewable the default for Fullerton as soon as possible. A default rate is a recommendation, not a mandate. It is an expression of your city's values. With community choice, everyone always has a choice, no matter what their city selects, because individuals can always choose a different product if they want or need to. Fossil fuel-based products, on the other hand, do not provide any choice to the people who have to live with the pollution that they create or their consequences, including Fullerton neighborhoods that are in the 90th to 100th percentile among all California communities for pollution burden. Since 2016, 28 California cities and counties have selected 100% renewable as their default through community choice energy. Last week, of course, Buena Park voted to join them. Data from the Clean Power Alliance, which is the Los Angeles CCE program, demonstrates that CCE customer opt-outs are consistently in the low single digits regardless of which product a city selects as its default. Earlier today, we sent the council information regarding OCPA's pricing relative to SoCal Edison and other investor-owned utilities that shows SCE prices will very likely go up in the next month or two. SDG&E announced earlier this month that their prices will go up nearly 8% on average. PG&E expects prices to go up around 9%. And this is due in large part to the rising cost of natural methane gas that they burn to generate electricity. Again, SCE's prices are expected to go up in the next month or so, along with those other IOUs, but OCPA's prices have been set for now. So what looks like a price premium today should go down in the near future. So as policymakers in the age of the climate crisis, we'd say it's up to you to do what you can, when you can. We hope you will make a choice tonight that you can look back on with pride. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
And Angela Lindstrom, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you. Hopefully you can hear me. Good evening, everyone. My name is Angela Lindstrom, and I'm one of two Orange County Power Authority Community Advisory Committee members representing the City of Fullerton. I was appointed in late 2021 by Mayor Fred Jung, who is OCPA's Vice Chairman of the Board. My role as a Community Advisory Committee member is to listen and voice the concerns and interests of Fullerton residents and businesses to the OCPA so that its energy policies and operations are aligned to Fullerton's needs and wants. As such, I will, for the most part tonight, refrain from advocating for any particular default-priced tiers, products for the Fullerton businesses and residents, but I would like to provide some context. I'm going to step out of role for a little bit, even with that promise, and that is that I, I hope that the City of Fullerton will take the leadership role and certainly not set a default that is lower than the middle tier, puts us above what Southern California Edison, a traditional utility, is about to implement, and, and certainly puts us not terribly far behind our neighbor, the City of Buena Park. Just going back to my role, just a little bit of context, OCPA is one of 23 operating community choice energy organizations in the state that together serve more than a million, 11 million customers. So it's not terribly newish. It is a joint powers, powers authority of four Orange County cities, as you heard earlier, including the unincorporated areas of Orange County. Hopefully, more cities will join to strengthen OCPA's ability to purchase clean energy and offer it at an even more competitive price than what you're going to, what you're seeing tonight. CCEs were formed to allow customers more control over using electricity from clean energy sources and its cost. The agenda before you tonight reflect those choices that will be available to you and me, our default clean energy proportion and pricing. In fact, even after the council's decision tonight on a citywide default, customers can make their own independent decisions when the OCPA programs are rolled out to us. There will be no disruption to our electricity. That will still be delivered through Southern California Edison's grid, but the energy sources that customers use will be controlled by OCPA, and that, of course, is shaped by its board and advisory committee who represent our communities. A lot of thought was put into the pricing tiers and forecasts in front of you tonight to balance OCPA's financial health, it is a not-for-profit, very importantly, with sustainability and competitive costs for our customers. I look forward to all public comments to share with the OCPA Board. For those who are unable to provide input today, OCPA has regular monthly public meetings of the Board and separately, Community Advisory Committees that you join.
And that's your three minutes.
Thank you. Next caller.
Linda Kramer, you should be able to unmute. Linda Kramer? There you go.
Yes. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Um, okay. Hello, and dear Mayor and City Council, my name is Linda Kramer. I'm the chapter co-chair of Climate Reality Project, a group of 300 members in nearly every city in Orange County, including Fullerton. Please vote for 100% renewable energy for Fullerton. I wanted to mention that the retention rate of all customers, all 11 million customers after 10 years is 93%. In LA, where they have 1,800% renewable customers, they, after three years, they have a 95.6% retention rate. So customers are happy even if they, some of them decide to opt down, which is their total choice. Remember that renewables, there are also many financial benefits. Renewables are now the cheapest form of energy, and the prices continue to decline every year, and I sent you a link in an email today about that. Some quick facts, the power default rate is what the city chooses as a starting point. Every single resident and business gets to choose if they want to stay in the default rate or make another choice, and they can make that choice every month. A minimum of four notices will be sent out, and residents and businesses tend to stay more than 90% at the default rate where they start, and remember, with a very high retention rate. Revenue from ratepayers, not new to taxes, millions per year, stays local. One example of that is that it is used to help create clean tech businesses. In the LA Business Journal, in '07, 2020, it was said that they were attracting clean tech hubs. Community choice allows for competitive rates and clean energy choice instead of a monopoly utility. Does anybody really love their current electrical utility? CCAs are taking the lead on resilience as well with large-scale solar and battery projects and increasing those constantly. I want to mention one more thing. Today, because I, I get air quality management notices because I have asthma, the air quality today in Fullerton is at a moderate, which is PM 2.5 concentrate, is currently 2.9 times higher than the recommended World Health Organization guidelines. So there is much reason to switch to renewable energies financially and for the health...
And that's your three minutes.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Thank you. Jane Rand, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you, Lucinda. One thing I wanted to comment on just briefly on the last item, I had my hand raised, didn't have an opportunity to speak, and I wanted to know the implications of us, of the, the city continuing the housing element. But now on this item, I'm, I have solar on my house, effectively 100% renewable, in the sense that I don't pull any more off the grid than I produce. In fact, I overproduce. And I have an agreement with Southern California Edison called the Net Energy Metering, where the excess that I produce, I then get paid back at a very small amount, at the market trading rate in February, is what I get paid back from Edison. But it also allows me to accrue value on my account that I can apply later, like in the winter where it might be colder and I might want to use a little more heat, or in the summer when I might want to use some air conditioning to cool. I'm concerned about this, I was expecting it to be an opportunity to opt in, not put into the program and then having to opt out. I would like to understand the impacts that will have on my net metering agreement with Southern California Edison. As you may or may not know, the new agreements with Edison are far less beneficial to the solar array owners, homeowners. So could someone please address that and what process I need to do so that if that is going to impact my agreement, I can, in advance of being moved into the program, can effectively not be opted in, to avoid any negative impacts? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Desi G., you should be able to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor Jung, and City Council members for allowing me to speak. My name is Desi Garcia. I am 18 years old, and I am currently attending Cal State Fullerton, and unfortunately, my future looks very bleak. At our current rate, I'll be experiencing the absolute worst of the climate crisis, and I may decide, I may not decide to have kids because of it in the future, and the same could be said for everyone, regardless of how old we are. However, by choosing 100% clean energy as the default for Fullerton, you'd be contributing to a brighter and healthier future for me and future generations. But not only that, by going to 100% would greatly benefit the city and the community as a whole, and would produce the least amount of harm. By voting on 100% renewable energy, we'd be reducing over 300,000 metric tons of carbon, the same as taking 68,000 cars off the streets. But you may say, why not 69%? That's a good compromise. Well, by choosing 100%, we'd be reducing 143,721 more metric tons of carbon than the 69% default. That is more than double the rate of emission reductions. And on top of the positive impact to our environment, 100% renewable energy would actually save ratepayers money on energy costs and help boost job creation. According to the OC Power Authority's estimated rates for residents, if Fullerton were to choose the 38.5% default, then energy costs would be... then energy costs would be more expensive for all residents. And OAKPA's rate scenario predicts that the rates will be 2.2% higher than SoCal Edison's with no rate option equal to SoCal, which would force people wanting the same rates to opt out of OAKPA. This would mean higher monthly energy costs, increased health risks, and putting our fragile climate closer to the brink of total destruction. But also, by ensuring that OAKPA purchases power from local clean power sources and not renewable energy credits, that would ensure true reduction in emissions and spur job creation for the city of Fullerton. So please, I love this city and I would love it if you guys could choose this. So for my future, for our city's future and this planet's future, do your part by choosing 100% clean energy as the default. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller?
And Shura Council? As soon as I can get my mouse to move, there it is. You should be able to unmute.
Good evening, Mayor Jung and council members. My name is Azim Sayed. I'm the chairman of the Board of the Shura Council of Southern California, which is a nonprofit consortium of Vedi mosques and other Muslim organizations serving the Southern California community, which includes several institutions in the city of Fullerton. The Shura Council recognizes that taking action to care for the environment is a part of the Islamic ethic. Several leaders around the world and speaking on behalf of the 1.6 billion Muslims have played an active role in combating climate change. People of all nations and their leaders have been asked to phase out greenhouse gas emissions as soon as possible in order to stabilize greenhouse gas concentrations in the atmosphere and to commit themselves to 100% renewable energy. So we deeply appreciate the Fullerton Council's decision to join the OC Power Authority, the first community choice energy program in Orange County. Thanks to that decision, you now have the opportunity to choose 100% renewable energy as a default choice for Fullerton energy users. Our understanding is that like all community choice programs, the OCPA will provide every ratepayer the ability to easily change their rate and energy product, no matter what default product Fullerton selects. We appreciate this flexibility as Fullerton provides for his families and points out that because people never change the default product selected by the city, your selection of a default product is of the utmost importance. The Islamic faith and declarations of climate change calls on influential countries like the US to recognize the moral obligation to reduce consumption so that other underprivileged countries may benefit from what is left of the earth's non-renewable resources. Emissions created in Fullerton can affect our global environment. By choosing 100% renewable energy now, we can create a meaningful reduction in emissions and provide a strong example to inspire other Orange County cities to do the same. Thank you all for your leadership on this critically important matter.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
And call in user one, you should be able to unmute.
Good evening, Lucinda. Do you hear me?
Yes, we can, Maureen.
Thank you. Good evening, council and Mayor Jung. I am calling to say that everything that has been said tonight is a tremendous amount of information. And it, there's just so much to soak in at one time. We have only had one other presentation regarding this option. But the thing that upsets me was there was never an option or someone from the Edison, SoCal Edison, to give their side of the story. One person can say any, say anything they wish, but without appropriate information from the other side, it's, it's hard to make a decision since SoCal Edison has been around since two days before dirt. I'm, I have nothing against what's hap, what's happening. I'm just against the idea that we have not had any other options to look into this, to study it, to have study sessions. I, I heard the authorities say that they had meetings, but this is the first time I've heard of it. And I tried to call both the authority and Edison company to find out more so it could sink into my, my brain and so I could better understand it. And I never got a return call from the authority. And the gals, the people that I would talk to at Edison, which I was really surprised, didn't get what I was saying, that I, could I talk to somebody regarding their side of the story? So that's my thing. How do we, you know, if, there's a lot to, to understand. I'm just sitting here going, my gosh, what am I going to do? So that was my upset that the Edison company didn't, wasn't here to give their side of the story. So I thank you so very much. And the next time this happens, I hope you have representatives from both sides. And I hope that I'm, that when I make a choice, that I make the right choice. That's the thing that I'm scared of, that I'm not going to make, be able to make the right choice for myself because of, of all the information that has to be absorbed. Thank you for allowing me to speak and whatever you decide, I just wish we would have had more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller?
We have four more hands raised. Michelle Ellison, you should be able to unmute.
Good evening, council. Congratulations on being a founding member agency of OC Power Authority. My name is Michelle Ellison and I'm on the board of Clean Power Alliance, the CCA serving Los Angeles and Ventura counties. Our communities are enjoying the many touted benefits of community choice energy, as you soon will too, like more choices, local control and programs, competitive rates in renewable energy. For the past four years, I've been supporting cities to go green by default. In Clean Power Alliance, 19 of our 32-member municipalities with 2 million people have chosen 100% as the default. The 100% renewable default has proven to be one of the most significant, cost-effective and immediate ways for cities to act on climate and reduce emissions. With this one council decision, you can virtually eliminate electricity-related emissions in Fullerton and make it easy for your roughly 135,000 residents to power their homes and businesses with clean energy, a truly remarkable feat. Client, climate scientists are warning us that governments at all levels everywhere must take immediate and unprecedented action to curb emissions. The good news is there are tools like the 100% default to help us get where we need to go. You as elected leaders in your city are in a unique position to respond. To date, 28 municipalities across California have gone to 100%, so you'll be in great company. Defaults have immense power to effect outcomes. Behavioral economics research shows that a vast majority of people stick with the default. So if you set it at 100%, most will remain there. Likewise, if you set it at a lower tier, most will remain there. There's very little movement. That's been the experience in Clean Power Alliance. All three of our default options have around a 95% participation rate. And for context, our 100% option has had a 9% bill premium, higher than your projected rate of just 5.5%. And we've had strong and steady customer retention. While the lower-tier options currently come with nominal cost savings, there's significantly more dirty energy content. And it's important to factor in the costs of externalities associated with more polluting emissions. The perception of saving a dollar or two in the short term is a dangerous illusion. For example, consider the billions of dollars in damages associated with our California wildfires. Industry studies reveal there's overwhelming public support for renewable energy. A wonderful benefit of community choice energy is that customers have more choices. The 100% default isn't forcing anything on anyone. It's simply a suggestion and customers have the freedom to choose another plan. It's easy to opt down. And customers will receive several enrollment notices, so they're well informed of their choices. In closing, it would be fantastic to have your city help lead the way toward a cleaner and healthier future for us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
And Lexi? You should be able to unmute.
Okay, hello?
We can hear you.
Perfect. Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor Jung and council members. My name is Lexi Hernandez and I'm an OC resident with the nonprofit Climate Action Campaign. And I just wanted to start by saying thank you so much for putting this discussion of clean electricity on the agenda today. Today, Fullerton has the opportunity to create cleaner, safer environments for all families by dramatically reducing the second largest source of greenhouse gas emissions in our region, electricity. This reduction of our emissions will address existing environmental injustices that Fullerton families are experiencing and start to build a future where no one ever has to experience this injustice in the first place. The quickest and most impactful way to reduce our emissions is to vote to set the default product for Fullerton at 100% renewable energy. This one decision will reduce emissions by 311,395 metric tons of carbon, which doubles the emissions reduction, reduction that we would see at 70%. To understand why choosing 100% renewable energy is so important, I believe it's key to visually see the reality of pollution in Fullerton and who will benefit the most from this decision. I've emailed you all copies of maps of the CalEnviron 4.0 data, which shows the major disparity in pollution burden in Fullerton. There are many communities who have historically and continue today to shoulder the burden of our fossil fuel industry, independent on dirty energy. Much of Southern Fullerton ranges from the 90s to 100 percentile for pollution burden, meaning that some neighborhoods are experiencing more pollution than 100% of all other California neighborhoods. This is especially concerning when we see that families who live here are already physically and socially disadvantaged. Many people here are experiencing poverty and have health, have health issues like asthma and cardiovascular disease, which makes chronic exposure to pollution and its worsening, and its resulting worsening conditions a harmful, inescapable cycle. This injustice becomes undeniable when considering that Hispanic folks only make up 36.1% of the city's total population, but make up 79.8% of the population in the most polluted area of Fullerton. Choosing to reduce emissions by selecting 100% renewables as a default is choosing to put the people of Fullerton who are the most impacted first. Residents will always have the ability to choose a different rate if they want or need to. In doing this, Fullerton can serve as a model for other cities in the region and protect and serve all people in Fullerton. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
And Glenda Howell? You should be able to unmute.
Good evening, Mayor Jung and council members. My name is Glenda Howell. My husband and I have lived in Fullerton on Mulberry Avenue for 42 years. I was a teacher with Fullerton School District for 25 years. Five years ago, climate change was not even an area of concern for me. While I knew others were passionate about it, my feeling was that there's not much we can do about it anyway. And honestly, though it may be affecting polar bears, it doesn't seem to be affecting me or anyone I really care about. Then something happened that changed my viewpoint. On a family trip to the Netherlands, we stayed in an Airbnb and I met Jeanette. Over several days, Jeanette became someone I cared about. When she told me that every Dutch person she knew could name exactly how many degrees warmer the earth could get before their dikes overflowed, climate change became a concern to me as well. When I returned home, I started researching. The more I learned, the more I became aware of the changes the warmer climate was causing in my country. These days, sadly, the effects of climate change are too obvious to be denied. In our own state, the raging wildfire season and the frequent droughts have made believers out of most of us. But what truly made me a passionate advocate for climate action were my own values. I came to realize that it's because of values I already hold that I should care deeply about this issue. First, I'm a mom and grandma, so I'm strongly committed to our future generations. Also, I'm a nature lover, so I'm committed to protecting this amazing world that we are privileged to inhabit. Thirdly, I'm a person of faith and as a person of faith, I feel a call to care for my neighbors, especially those who are the most vulnerable. And research shows that the poor and disadvantaged are most affected by the changing climate. What about my feeling that nothing could be done about the climate anyway? That too has thankfully been changed. When I discovered that Fullerton and other cities had joined the OCPA, I was thrilled. Instead of being overwhelmed and paralyzed to inaction, I see our council working together to make positive change. Tonight, I want to applaud that work and encourage the next step. I respectfully ask that the council vote that 100% clean energy be our default. In addition, I ask that the council direct OCPA to use local clean energy rather than unbundled sources. And finally, let's ask OCPA to find a way to subsidize disadvantaged families who might not be able to afford the monthly increase but still want 100% clean energy. Taking these small steps now will impact our future in a huge way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
And Marcy Frye, you are our last speaker, so you should be able to unmute.
Oh, great. Hi, I'm Marcy Frye. I've lived in Fullerton, I think, for 42 years. Also, Glenda, interesting. And I'm a retired teacher from Fullerton School District. And I love Fullerton. I love living here. Before I lived here, I lived in Los Angeles and I taught there. And I was absolutely astounded. I had come from the Midwest before that. I was astounded at how many kids had asthma. And in those days, this was in the 70s, we had smog days and we had a lot of smog days. And the kids had to stay inside and the air was just horrible. I, I just remember how bad it was. And what, that was about the time when, when the state started taking action on, on car pollution and, and on gasoline and, and things. And what's amazing to me is that it did make a huge difference. And I thought, I'm, I'm so grateful to those leaders who chose to make a hard decision, but it made a difference in the way that people can breathe. And I'm always grateful to them. Well, of course, pollution still is, is pretty bad and, and living in in those days, I found one of my parents, one of the students' parents was a scientist. And I invited him to come to school and talk to the kids about the environment. And that was the first time, way back in the 70s, and he talked about renewable energy and all of these things that I really hadn't heard about before. And I think now, oh my gosh, what if we as a country and as a world had really listened and taken action way back then? Well, we didn't, obviously, not to the degree we should have. And now we're living in a situation where there's a lot of smog. I too have asthma and I have to watch the particles in the air so that I can exercise or not. A lot of people suffer because they don't, they, they can't, the elderly, the children, parents are concerned, asthma medicine is a fortune. It's tough. And I just am so excited about the possibility of going 100% clean energy. I didn't think it was a chance. And then when I heard Buena Park went, I thought, why can't Fullerton too be on the cutting edge and do the right thing for its residents? And I so hope that you will be able to tell your grandkids that you may.
And that's your three minutes.
Thank you. No more callers. We'll bring this back to council. You know, to the last caller's, Ms. Frye's point, I, I'm long in the tooth enough to remember smog days. I grew up on the suburbs of LA. There were some days we couldn't go outside for recess when I was in elementary school and I certainly couldn't dream of seeing downtown LA's picturesque skyscape because it was shrouded in smog most of the days. So I recall when leaders in the state took action with our gasoline, with our car emissions, and it made a remarkable difference. I could see LA once more. You know, I think we have to all recognize that climate change is not partisan, it's the existential threat to our future. We are duty-bound to find ways to mitigate it for our children and our grandchildren. This is an opportunity for one of the oldest cities in Orange County to do one of the most forward things. I, I find zero value. And quite frankly, there's no time to ease our way into this bathtub anymore. So I would encourage all of you this evening to make the default rate at 100%. We go full renewable and let's give our future a much better outlook than it has right now. Any other council comments? Please, Mr. Zar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things from that, from the callers, some questions. Southern California Edison cannot comment on, on this or, or provide any input because of state laws. They are prevented from doing so. So just for Maureen to know that. And as far as there, there will be low-income programs to subsidize folks who may not be able to afford the payments. Those will continue, just like they would have with, with Edison. And, you know, I, I remember, what was this, 2019, late 2019, when, when I believe myself and, and Councilman, was it Councilman Silva, who agendized, we agendized this together to join the Power Authority. I think this was an important move and I to join the power authority. I think this was an important move and I commend Irvine for spearheading this. And I'm really proud that our city was the city that joined and was one of the founding members of the power authority. And I really commend our mayor for his leadership representing our city on the power authority this last year. I think that, you know, it's always rough to start something new. And but I'm really proud of all the work and the collaboration that the cities that have joined in making this happen. And we are here debating now real action and I'm really encouraged for our future. You know, I've lived for 20 years in the part of town that has the highest air pollution. And you see it in some of the most vulnerable communities in our city. We have to take action. I was looking at the air quality today and it seems, in the last few days, in fact, it was moderate. And I don't think that's acceptable. Moderate is still higher than, you know, moderate overall. In some cases, it's actually, you know, quite impactful on the health. And so this is really for our future, for the future generations. I was really encouraged to hear the young man who called in and spoke so eloquently about the importance of looking out for future generations. I think this is a signal not only for what is happening now because climate change and the effects of it are happening now. We're seeing this. But this is also a message of hope. I want, you know, I want this young man to not feel so desperate and to have a family and to have a future and to look forward with hope for something bright. And so with that, I am supportive of 100%. There are so many options for people to opt out. And I think, and if I may, I would like to make the motion for that.
And I will second that, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before you take the vote.
Are you want us to separate it from the city and the
Separate that. And then if you are interested, we do have cost implications here for the city side. We have that information. We can share that. And I think there is a message through things like our Naresco Energy Project and things like that that will cover
Let's go ahead and separate that. Councilmember, if that's all right with you, let's just discuss the consumer right now. Is that all right?
Sure, that is fine. I will make that motion. I will make both, motions for both, but pending, obviously, the outcome.
And I will second the consumer portion of it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council?
Yes.
I would just
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, you know, I hate to rain on the parade, but I guess, you know, I'm not in support of this. I think one of the things that I've seen as I've watched this over the past 12 to 18 months has been, you know, that it's not, things have not quite played out. I don't believe how we, you know, how they were presented to us. And I also don't think necessarily that they've accomplished anything above and beyond what Edison has done. And so ultimately, I'm a bit concerned about this creation of almost a new government entity that's ultimately going to cost ratepayers more in the end, especially, you know, seeing as there are some of these benefits currently available through Edison. So, you know, I certainly, I think if we were looking at this, I could be supportive if it required an opt-in as opposed to an opt-out and would likely be supportive if it were all at the basic rate. I know that's not what a lot of the advocates would like to hear. However, the advocates also have their saying that they would be able to opt in in that case. But that's kind of where I'm at. And that's, those are my thoughts.
Very good. Councilman Silva, any comments, sir?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, a couple of things on this. Councilmember Zara was right. I was one of the ones that watered us into this. But back then, I was given the impression that we were not, when I say we, the residents, were not going to incur any additional cost. And it seems like the options we have in front of us, we are gonna, other than the basic, the residents are going to incur some additional cuts, I'm sorry, additional costs. And that was never made clear to me, or maybe I missed it. So that's a concern. And it's only a concern because, like they said, the people are not going to opt out. And I understand there is some assistance for some of the low-income qualifiers. But there's a lot of residents out there who may not qualify for that. And then they'll have their items, their costs go up. And I don't know if I can support that just because that's not what I, I was skeptical of this. But I was, you know, listened and learned a little bit of it. And I decided to move forward and look at it because I think it is a good exercise to go look at it. But on that, and then just a couple of things on the, I think it was the young lady or the gentleman that mentioned about how some of the communities of color or loss of economics are living in the areas that are more polluted. And that's partly due, well, not partly, it is due to the redlining that has occurred in the past where you did put some of these communities of color, underserved communities in these areas where there was more, they're more dense and more congested. So it's not due to the electricity here. And I would be in favor of a basic choice just because, you know, a thought came to mind and I'm going all over the place. But I don't know if I can, how do I want to say, bring up another additional cost to a lot of the residents. And at this point in time, I don't know if I can do that. I can, I don't know if I can go 100% or even at the smart level. But if we go to the basic, then they have the option of, no, they don't have the option of opting in, huh? The other people that want to go 100%?
You know, they say it's, well, they, no, they could. They just couldn't, I guess they can't, there can't be, there can't be an opt-in scenario is what it is. They can opt into the higher, but they would have to be opting in at least at the basic rate, so.
Yeah, because, you know, and you're right, Councilmember Dunlap, a lot of the emails I got that were really enthusiastic about going that rate. So I think a lot of those people will be willing to opt in. But I'm concerned that the people that are gonna, this impacted most in terms of cost and the daily cost of living are the people that are not paying attention, that are not gonna, they're just gonna pay because they want to pay their bills on time. So, yeah, I don't, I don't know if I can go, well, I can go 100%.
Are you going to make a substitute motion for the second or for the, for that?
Before we do that, one second. We still have to hear from the mayor pro temp.
Yeah, if I could just finish
Go ahead and finish your thoughts.
Yeah, so, but anyway, so, no, I was just gonna again say that a lot of the emails we did get were from people who are willing to do this and are able to. I just, again, don't know if the people, and I'll say, South Fullerton are going to be able or want to or aware of, hey, they can opt out. So I'll leave it at that and we'll hear from them.
Understood. And to your concern about South Fullerton, I would encourage you to think about the fact that we could right a wrong. We could do something to change their life, their daily life, do something tangible. And I recognize that you're worried about the fiscal sustainability over some dollars here that is a significant percentage to some that are living at that level. But if you qualify for Edison's supportive rates, you still qualify for here. It's a lateral move as far as monetarily you're concerned. So I ask that you think about that, sir, and before that, please, Mr. Mayor Pro Temp.
Yes, I'm struck by certain contradictions because when we formed the OC Power Authority, there were certain representations made, one of which was initial promises of lower rates. Now, I understand there are continuing promises that over time and with mass numbers of customers that that may lower rates. But the contradictions are still problematic to me. There were advocates who called in this evening that said renewable energy is the lowest cost electricity. And I have to point out that much of that is heavily subsidized currently by taxpayers as well. But if it is indeed the lowest cost of electricity, why can't we promise lower rates? We've had advocates call in and talk about subsidizing those who cannot afford 100% clean energy. Again, if this is the lowest cost way to generate power, doesn't make sense to me. Some callers have postulated that a 100% renewable energy mandate enjoys overwhelming support. Well, if that indeed is the case, it should be an opt-in. It should not be the default position, which is going to have people opted in. We are representatives of the public. And very often, it's important to check in with them as to what their desires really are. But so many of the advocates say there's overwhelming support. So what's really the danger of having an opt-in as opposed to a fallback default position? And over time, there are very many public policy actions, which I've always been suspicious of. And any policy action which survives absent a majority protest of those who are affected, I think, is something to be avoided. So to me, if even the strongest advocates of this will say that those things are true, that this is going to be the lowest cost, it enjoys overwhelming support, then to me, the lowest damage decision for us is to go with the basic, the basic plan. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Zara, you had something?
Yes, I just wanted to, just, Councilman Silva, just to point out that if we go with the basic, that could actually affect the rate overall because then the power authority has to recalculate its rates. And I think consumers will end up paying more ultimately. So there is a premium to that. So I would encourage not to, at least not to, to choose the basic.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, you know, Mayor Pro Temp Whitaker just did trigger something. Yeah, that was one of the understandings that I had back then was that we were going to get lower rates and it was going to be, yeah, lower than Edison. And again, at that time, I didn't know too much about this and I still don't know everything. But I do see that when rates go up, you know, rates go up. But to that point, there is an option here that if we do pick the basic rate, the people can opt into the other ones. Now, on those four letters that are going up, maybe this is the question for Naissa or somebody, if the joint power people are still on there, will there be, again, an effort in those notices to encourage people to opt into the 100%? Just as we would, is that, can you do a campaign of that sort where we're going basic but flood the market with opting in 100%?
I can speak on behalf of the city side. Yes, if you give us that direction, you know, we can put some public outreach side on our side. But on those specific notices, I will defer to Brian to see if that's possible or not, specific to Fullerton.
Good evening again. The notices are more descriptive of the opportunities to make the choices, but they're not a sales pitch per se. We have a lot more information on the website, which is an easier venue to share that kind of information than in a brief mailer.
Did that answer your questions or concerns, Councilman Silva?
Somewhat did, yeah. So I guess it might be up to the city side to say, hey, let's do that. Targeted mailing, I guess, to have people opt in to the higher one.
Correct. If we get that policy direction from the council to do so, we will do so.
Thank you.
If I may, if there is anything I'd like to advise on for the power authority, I think, and it's one of, you know, I hope this is a constructive criticism, is that I think more information should be disseminated to the public. There should have been more outreach, I think, and more maybe community events and, you know, reporting as to this, as it was forming. Because there certainly was a lot of misinformation and some issues that came about. But part of it is because there was never enough information. So moving forward, I hope that is the case. And especially now with whatever decision comes out of here is that we need to make sure that people are aware of the choices that they have. And to however extent we can make that possible, we should.
All right, very good. Any other comments or questions? All right, Madam City Clerk, there's a question. Please call the roll.
And this is for the 100% residential.
That's correct.
If I get my sheet. Councilmember Dunlap.
No.
Councilmember Silva.
No.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Temp Whitaker.
No.
And Mayor Jung.
Aye.
And this fails three to two.
Oh, we'll entertain substitute motion or another, excuse me, another motion since that last one failed. Obviously, 100% renewable is not appetizing for this council. So if somebody else has something else, let's give it a go.
I'd move the basic tier.
I'll second that.
I'd like to make substitute for the 69% tier.
I'll second that.
Actually, let me just clarify. So we don't vote for the basic option. We're stuck. We got to make a vote on this one way or the other. Suppose the other option would be, you know, agendizing an exit from the power, this power authority. So, okay.
It's just the order, I guess. Although I might want to rename the smart choice the basic choice rather than being called the smart choice.
We have a substitute motion on the, please call the roll, Madam City Clerk.
This is for the 69%.
That's correct.
Councilmember Dunlap.
No.
Councilmember Silva.
Well, I want to make sure that if we do something like this, that, oops, my mic's on. That can we include an aggressive, I guess, campaign to let the residents know that they can opt out? Because that's my concern, I guess. I said that people are not going to opt out and they're going to incur this increase and just incur it. So, no, but the 100%, I couldn't stomach, but I can stomach the smart choice. Well, yes.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Temp Whitaker.
No.
And Mayor Jung.
Aye.
So this one passes three to two.
And with this direction, if I may, as we approach, as we send out notices to folks out there, that we make sure that that's in multiple languages.
So noted.
All right, very well. So now we are back to the city. Obviously, if, judging by our last vote, I think we can make this fairly simple if somebody wants to make a motion. Let's go ahead and do that.
Mr. Mayor, I believe I also made the motion for 100% for our city.
I'll, I've seconded that. So we do have a motion and a second.
We're going to get a presentation, right?
We can give you briefly the cost implications of the three options.
Sure. Let's go ahead and do that.
So Naissa, if you could pull up that slide.
You could switch me over to the presentation, Peter. Thanks.
Since we had good data from Naresco and that recent process, we had good data on our energy usage both before the COVID pandemic and during it. So we've been able to go back and average what it was prior to that period of time.
Yes. So what this chart shows you is much of what Jeff said. We have some real data of what our energy consumption was in kilowatt hours in 2018, 2019, and 2020. So what this chart shows us is if the city was a member of the OCPA back in those years at these rates, how much more of a cost impact would it impact our budgeting and our expenditures if we were to select the smart choice back then and the 100% renewable choice back then? Again, the basic choice is assumption that there would be no cost increase, so it's not included in this chart. So if you look on, all the way to the left, you'll see the rows are numbered. On row two, our annual consumption for 2018 was 23.5 million kilowatt hours. That total energy consumption cost the city of Fullerton $3.2 million. And you can see that amount in row three. That moves on forward for the rest of the rows for 2019 and 2020. You'll see in 2019, cost of energy was 3.3 million for the city of Fullerton. And in 2020, $3 million. Again, this is all city facilities. So on row four, you'll see this is the scenario for if the city were to select the smart choice blend in 2018. Selecting such a choice would have cost the city an extra $235,000. 2019, $238,000. And in 2020, $205,000. In the orange rows, this is for the 100% renewable choice in 2018. Same level of consumption, that cost would have increased an additional $352,000 to 2019, $358,000. And then to 2020, $308,000. The very last column is an average estimate of the energy consumption for 2018 and 2019. We did not include 2020 just because of the pandemic and its impacts. A lot of our facilities were closed. So it was an outlier year and we felt that it wouldn't give a good kilowatt estimate going forward. So that average estimate is 23.7 million kilowatt hours. that average estimate is 23.7 million kilowatt hours, which comes out to an estimated cost of $3.2 million with the basic choice, or if we stay with Southern California, Edison, whichever one. So the estimated on row four for the smart choice, an extra $237,000 cost. And then on row six, again, in the orange, all the way down under annual consumption estimate for 2018 and 2019, you see the extra cost of $355,000. So that explains the whole chart. But equally as important to mention is the city is moving forward with our Public Works Department on that Naresco Energy Efficiency Project. And their estimate is that moving on forward, when their project is implemented, that they expect to see just under a 15% reduction in consumption of the 2020 kilowatt rate. So that 2.5 million kilowatt average, 15% less than that. My math is, is rough, but you can assume around 18,000 kilowatt energy, kilowatt hour energy usage. So just wanted to share this. We had some real historical numbers, but I, it's also equally important to share that in the future, we are looking to be more energy efficient and to use less energy. So.
All right. Thank you very much for the presentation.
No problem.
You know, I, I want to give some food for thought for everybody on the council. You know, it's one thing if you want to advocate for the consumer, and I see value in that. So I understand what Mayor Protem was advocating, and I certainly understand what Councilman Dunlap and Councilman Silva were advocating. This is now a city choice that we're talking about. And when we're doing all of these efficiency studies and have implementing Naresco and all of these ESCO plans to save energy and save money, I think that 350,000 projected, which I don't even think is going to be correct, because again, we're going to be using more efficient and less energy as we continue forward with these projects, is a small price to pay. In fact, it overwhelmingly, we end up saving just as much to cover that cost entirely. So I, I do encourage all of you to, to think about that this evening. And if there's any more council comments, I'm certainly receptive of them.
Yes, Mr. Go ahead, Mr. Silva.
Can you put that chart back up, please? And so the last part I wasn't clear on, maybe I'm getting old and I couldn't hear. So your, Naresco said, when we get to implement the Naresco plan, you said we're going to be at the 2020 consumption thereabout?
So they're, they're basing their cost savings off of that 2020 consumption.
Okay.
So, so look at the 20 million, the 20.5 million kilowatt hour. They're estimating around 15% less than that, which is about 18 million kilowatt hours.
So, so our, our additional cost of 205,000, let's say for a smart choice, will be 15% less? Can we do say that, or is that even?
The math gets a little fuzzy there. I, I can't give you an exact number, but I can say that you would still likely, with the smart choice, realize some cost savings. But it's also fair to say that you wouldn't realize the same amount of cost savings if you were to do the basic choice. I hope that makes some sense.
You're probably roughly dropping off of that $355,000 cost figure, you probably have actually. A $500,000 savings, that'll more than cover that, is roughly the number.
We're going to say it because we picked the smart choice or the renewable?
No, that's if you go to the 100% renewable. If you did that, you're going to have enough savings in that, and power usage to cover the, the additional cost of, of the 100% renewable.
And, and this option is similar to the other ones, that we can opt back in, right? If, if the numbers are, and I understand we're advocating for the city, but I think right now, too, given that the cuts we've made, incurring another quarter million dollars in expenses, I, I don't know about that.
Well, you know, Councilman, to your point, I, I think to frame it in the context of incurring another, however many thousands of dollars this is, I, I think you're not realizing the cost benefit at the end, right? We are impacting the environment in a positive way. So what does that really cost? What is, what are we willing to pay for that? We pay additionally already for the gas to do that. So I don't hear many people, including yourself, comment on how, how the gas prices are. We do this recognizing the important value of it at the end. And so I really encourage you to think about that, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Sure. Go ahead, sir.
Also, I mean, we have to look at this massive number of 20 million 500 kilowatts. We are a very large energy consumer as a city. And what I'm seeing here is numerical calculations, but not how we are affecting negatively the environment and the impact it has on our own residents. And so to me, this doesn't, it's not to me an expense. This is an investment in the health and well-being of our community, which I believe is our number one job as a local government. We are not an accounting firm. And I know that we've invested, and for those who don't know about Naresco, this is an investment and a choice we made, a decision we made as a city to go in and look at our energy efficiency and make sure that we are as an, an agency, efficient in every single way, including adding solar and so on. And I believe that will offset this additional cost, and we, we will be a better and healthier community for it. So we have to look at that non-tangible value as well. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have one additional point. I just, Ellis has pointed this out to me, and I wasn't familiar with the background on the Naresco project that predated me. The energy savings that we would occur are actually going to be, going to offset debt service. So, so that, that savings couldn't be applied here. So I stand corrected on that.
Understood. Yeah.
I want to make that clear.
It's important that you clarified that, but I, I think everybody understood that concept.
You know, I'll just add.
Councilman Dunlap?
Yeah, I just think it's, it's, at this point, it's, it's not wise for us to ratchet up spending, you know, considering, you know, I think as Councilmember Silva had, had pointed out, some of the cuts that have been made. You know, you look at these things and you start to look at certain numbers differently. I look at these figures and I see that's, you know, the salary, you know, overtime and benefits roughly of a police officer or firefighter. So, you know, really to that end, you know, I'm not in favor of increasing the rates at this point. Perhaps it's something we explored, you know, future point in time. But at this point, I, I would not support it. So hopefully, we can get through the discussion and get on to other items.
Mr. Mayor Protem, yes, sir.
I didn't have some of this information in the agenda, or I would have looked this up myself or tried to determine, but maybe someone who's been studying this has an answer. Councilmember Zara talked about our 20 and a half million kilowatt hours as being a huge amount in the city. And I'm just wondering, as a SCE customer, what percentage of total electricity use in the city of Fullerton do we represent?
That's a good question. I don't have that at the top of my head, but I'm sure we could ask, maybe Naresco has that data for us to be given to the council.
It'd be interesting data, even if it's late, you know, beyond this decision. But the idea of understanding our impact citywide, I think, would be helpful.
Yeah, we have lots of power for, you think of all of our water company, you think about all of our streetlights. There's so many power needs that we operate here.
If we keep losing industries, we'll be a larger percentage all the time, right?
Very good. Madam City Clerk, you have a question? Please call the roll.
And this is for 100% on the city side. Councilmember Dunlap?
No.
Councilmember Silva?
No.
Councilmember Zara?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Whitaker?
No.
And Mayor Jung?
Aye.
And item fails two to three.
All right. So if there's another motion that can be made, so we, obviously, this is not of appetite to this council. So if we can move on to something that is, I'd welcome a motion in a second.
I'll move for the basic, basic choice option, and then we can always roll in when things get better into the higher options, right? That's still same as the residential one. We can opt in.
Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dunlap?
Aye.
Councilmember Silva?
Aye.
Councilmember Zara?
No.
Mayor Protem Whitaker?
Aye.
And Mayor Jung?
No.
Motion passes three to.
All right. Onto the next item. We have a second quarter financial report, mid-year budget assessment for fiscal year 2021, 2022. Director Chang, I believe she's on Zoom to make the presentation. Please, Director Chang.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This evening, we will provide a brief overview of general funds, ending fund balance for fiscal year end 2021, highlight the categories of budget amendments requested this evening, and present updated financial forecasts. The agenda report includes a request for approval of budget amendments, while the financial updates presented this evening are simply received and filed. So at fiscal year end 2021, general fund ended with a surplus with revenues exceeding expenditures by $3.3 million. After net transfers out, the net change in fund balance was $2.3 million. Thus, the general fund ending fund balance was $20.6 million, as shown here on Slide 2, under total fund balance of $20.56 million. This slide shows the allocation of fund balance, of which 4.4 million is not available. That 4.4 million is made up of the non-spendable and restricted lines in that first box. The non-spendable category is primarily comprised of land held for resale, recorded at $2.9 million, while the restricted category of $1.5 million is comprised of donations primarily to the library, as well as contributions to the city's 115 pension trust. Assigned fund balance, highlighted in gray, are monies designated by City Council for special projects and contingency reserves, which are increased from 10% to about 13.5%, closer to City Council's goal of achieving a 17% reserve level, which is about two months of working capital. The contingency reserve of $13.26 million is the beginning fund balance of forecast to be presented shortly. Before review of the updated financial forecast, Stephen Avalos, Budget and Purchasing Manager, will review the budget amendments submitted for City Council approval this evening. And with that, I'll have the presentation over to Steve.
Thank you, Alice. Typically, during the mid-year budget review is when budget amendments are presented for City Council consideration, as a result of any changes and any budgeted assumptions, any change in economic factors. And we normally know more of our spending and revenue intake through the midpoint of the fiscal year. As such, there are a handful of budget amendments as presented in Exhibit 8 for your consideration, with the majority pertaining to the general fund. Before I get to the general fund adjustments, there are budget adjustments to some of the city's other funds, in the Brea Dam Fund and the city's IT Fund. For the Brea Dam Fund, we have budget adjustments for the tennis center, in which its operations were being assessed at the time of budget adoption and was not originally budgeted for in fiscal year 21, 22. Since then, the city has continued the tennis center's operations, and this program's revenue and expenditure budget are included. The city's golf court, golf course revenues have also seen a substantial uptick in revenues since the pandemic, one of the few positive effects, and the revenue adjustment of 1.3 million is included. Also included are several administrative budget adjustments for the city's Internal Services Fund, the, the Information Technology, or IT Fund. And these are largely due to consolidating all of department's IT needs into the IT Fund, which was new for fiscal year 21, 22. And most of these adjustments are simply budget corrections. In addition, there are budget amendments related to cybersecurity improvements approved earlier this year that were also included. There are no major issues in the city's other funds, and no other budget adjustments are needed at this time for the other, for the city's other funds. Now, I will discuss the general fund and its budget adjustments presented before you. Most of those major budget adjustments for your consideration are to the general fund, and, and they are revenue adjustments, as expenditures are currently in line with adopted budget levels through the midpoint of the fiscal year. The first revenue adjustment is for sales tax revenues. Per the city's recent Q3 sales tax meeting with its consultant, sales tax are now projected to exceed budgeted levels by $3.9 million, and, and are now projected to end the year at $27.5 million. This is largely due to a faster-than-anticipated economic recovery from the pandemic, in addition to new sales tax contributors coming to the city in fiscal year 2021, in addition to the new online sales tax that was enacted back in 2019, which has provided an uptick in the city's county pool sales tax allocations to the city. In addition, transient occupancy taxes, or better known as TOT revenues, are also performing well to date, much like our sales tax, and will likely exceed budgeted levels by $1 million. In this revenue adjustment, this also includes an adjustment for short-term revenue, short-term rental TOT revenues, which was a new program that was approved last year by the council. As mentioned in prior forecasts, new developer fee increases approved earlier this year is also included as a revenue adjustment. Next slide, Alice. Alice, can you move to the next slide, please?
It's on Slide 4 now, too.
Okay, thank you. Before I hand the presentation back to Alice to present the updated financial forecasts, I will provide a brief overview of the updated assumptions to the forecast. The updated forecast that we'll discuss will include an updated beginning fund balance, as mentioned by Alice in the prior, in the prior slide. These forecasts update the city's beginning financial position to start fiscal year 21, 22, which is now at $13.3 million. The beginning position is considered assigned, as the City Council designated this amount as contingency reserves at a 13.5% reserve levels earlier this year. The updated forecast will also include updated revenue projections, which include the updated sales tax and TOT revenue adjustments, as we just discussed. And this will total $5.1 million, which is now added, which will now be added to the baseline revenues. Our baseline expenditures will include factoring out the 3.8 million in vacancy savings in our new revised baseline expenditure totals. The updated financial forecast will also include the application of ARPA for revenue replacement. And this will include the application of 9.6 million of ARPA for revenue replacement, which will be spread out over the first two years of the forecast, 6.3 million being applied in fiscal year 21, 22, and 3, and 3.3 million in fiscal year 22, 23. In doing so, this will allow the city to achieve its 17% reserve levels in fiscal year 21, 22, and through the duration of the forecast. I will now hand the presentation back to Alice, who will discuss four models of the financial forecast to illustrate the city's financial condition with these updated assumptions, as well as present this baseline model with the 2.5% additional budget reductions that was approved by the City Council, and a last model with recent updates to the city's CalPERS projections.
Thank you, Steve. The baseline forecast, which is labeled here as Model 1, includes the updated beginning fund balance, shown in that first highlighted row in blue. That 13.26 million is essentially the city's contingency reserve at the end of 2021, as there were no unassigned fund balance available remaining in general fund. Entire beginning fund balance here in the forecast is the contingency reserve itself. In addition, you see on that first section under revenues, the revenue budget adjustments of the 5.075 million that is being requested this evening as a budget adjustment is layered in on top of the base operating revenue that was adopted at the $101 million level at the beginning of 21, 22. The revenue forecasts then are adjusted thereafter. The base expenditure budget, as Steve had mentioned, is, is currently in line with adopted budget levels. As such, no other adjustments are being requested from a budgetary perspective for 21, 22. And that $107 million expenditure budget is what was adopted by City Council. And that $107 million expenditure budget is what was adopted by city council. With that, for fiscal year 2021, we are still reflecting about $1 million in deficit. And, sorry, excuse me. But given the level of vacancy rates the city is currently experiencing, I anticipate that as we approach fiscal year end 2122, that deficit will likely diminish. Total net transfers in and out for 2122 are at $281,000, and then that results in a 1.3 or 1.35 million net change in fund balance as a negative. With the application of ARPA in the 6.3 in fiscal year 2122 and fiscal year 2223, you see that the ending fund balance picture is much improved. Given the application of ARPA for revenue replacement at the $9.6 million, we would be looking at the ability to achieve a 17% contingency reserve level should city council desire to increase contingency reserves above the 13.5%, closer to the 17% as we approach fiscal year end 2122. And each of the following models, the baseline forecast presented here is layered with additional specific changes. And one more thing that we probably need to point out is that it is important to note that the baseline forecast assumes that any residual benefits from the application of the $9.6 million of ARPA for revenue replacement will not be diverted for one-time use. Should city council designate any remaining unassigned fund balance for other uses as we move forward in the upcoming years, the forecast will change accordingly. This next slide labeled Model 2 is the same baseline forecast with the additional 2.5% additional reductions layered in in that first orange-yellow line labeled expenditure reductions, additional 2.5% budget cuts. That essentially effectively reduces our base operating expenditure budget by about $2.8 million in fiscal year 2122, thereby lowering the operating expenditure budget from 107 million to 104 million. With that change layered in, the operating deficit refers to a operating surplus of about 1.7 million. After net transfers in and out, the net change in fund balance results in a positive $1.4 million. And then once again, with the application of ARPA for revenue replacement, we would potentially be ending in a stronger financial position for 2122 with ability to have some available funds above a 17% contingency reserve level. So here on Slide 3, we take that original baseline forecast in Model 1 and then we layered in just the CalPERS projections. As we had mentioned previously, CalPERS investment gains returned in fiscal year 2021 of about 21.3% will result in the addition of a new pension amortization base, which will effectively reduce the city's unfunded accrued liability by approximately $69 million to be advertised over 20 years. The city will begin experiencing the benefit of the CalPERS gains in fiscal year 2324. With the strong investment returns, CalPERS did however reduce its long-term investment target or discount rate of 7% to 6.8%, which will increase the city's normal cost contribution. The lowering of the discount rate to 6.8% reduces CalPERS' investment return target, enabling CalPERS to take less investment risk going forward. As the CalPERS actuary report will not be available until August of this calendar year, the city did estimate the impact of the CalPERS gains as well as its other actuarial assumptions on the general fund as presented in that gray highlighted line labeled estimated CalPERS projections. While this is positive news for all CalPERS agencies, designation of these reduced budgetary expenditures levels should however be tempered. This slide shows CalPERS investment returns since 1984. Since the Great Recession, about half of annual returns were above as well as below CalPERS discount rate target. The takeaway is that while the UAL reduction the city will benefit from is positive news as pension liabilities change every year based on a number of factors, investment returns, discount rate, mortality, wage growth. This positive news may not be sustainable. As staff began to develop the pension policy, one consideration will be utilizing some amount of the future UAL budgetary relief and contributing some of this quote-unquote savings into the city's pension 115 trust. And this will enable the city to potentially better manage budgetary instability resulting from pension-related budgetary escalations in the future. Here on Slide 9, Model Number 4 is the baseline with both the 2.5% additional reductions as well as the CalPERS projections layered in. The Model 4 takes the baseline forecast and shows the accumulation of the additional budget reductions as well as the pension relief, which as indicated earlier, may not be wholly sustainable. As presented here in Model 4, this does considerably improve general fund's financial trajectory. Before I close with recommendations, staff is available to address any questions.
I'm going to recommend, because it's a receive-and-file item, let's keep the questions until after public comments on this item so we could be more efficient on this. So if you could hold your questions, counsel, I'd certainly be grateful. Go ahead, Director Chang, finish your presentation.
Okay, with that, it's recommended that city council receive and file the second quarter financial report for fiscal year 2122 and also approve Exhibit A for fiscal year 2122 budgeted amendments attached to the agenda report as attachment 3, and authorize the city manager, does he need, to make the approved budget amendments to the fiscal year 2122 budget.
Very good, thank you. We will now hear public comments on this item. Madam City Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to comment?
I'm pausing just for one moment, but I see no hands raised in soon.
Very good, we'll bring this back to council. Any council members with any comments or questions on the item?
You know, I'm trying to actually just find out, I mean, we just approved the budget, what, two months ago? And getting hit up again here. You know, I'm supportive of the receive-and-file and looking at these assumptions, you know, I just, I don't know why we have an immediate need to revisit this if we just pass, I mean, you know, maybe, you know, maybe it seems like it was two months ago, maybe it was longer, but was it not two months?
I think it's just an update, Councilman. You know, I do understand your concerns and I think we have some legitimate concerns as we progress through the agenda. But we've had these agenda books for days. I would hope everyone on council has had an opportunity to go through and study them. So we'll go make the rounds and see if anybody's got any questions or comments. Councilman Silva, you have anything, sir?
No, I just want to thank staff for, you know, I know it's kind of tedious sometimes, but I think this information is sometimes we need so we can see it. And I understand what you're saying, Councilmember Dunlap, we did have the budget, but I think this is quarterly or every two-quarter update that I think it's worth a bit of time to look over and make adjustments that we need to.
Very good.
Thank you, staff, for the report.
Councilman Zara, do you have a comment or anything?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So to me, this is very encouraging and I remember when the first quarter report came out, there was also a little bit of an increase and an adjustment that happened then. And I remember we had that discussion where I said, well, you know, there could be another one and here we are, there is another increase again. So I'm encouraged where our city's tax base is going and that means there's economic activity happening in our city beyond what we expected. So I'm encouraged by that to see our businesses. This is an indication of good business in our city, so I'm happy to see that. I hope we can use this additional money, obviously, to reinvest in our services and in some of the vacancies that we have and maybe fill some of these positions so we can replenish some of our services. But this is also a good opportunity to really see how important it is to support our businesses and economic development in our city because this is really where we are generating the revenue that we can reinvest in our city. So I'd love to see from staff, you know, an economic development strategy or a business development strategy so that we can actually invest in more of this because that's, I think, where we need to do so to improve our tax base. So I hope we can get that put forward as we move along.
Very good, Mr. Mayor Proton.
Yes, Councilmember Dunlap, there is a value in tracking on this and I understand people's eyes glaze over. But especially during this pandemic year, there are sometimes a few surprises here as well. So I think it's always worth taking a little bit of time and maybe being able to ask a few questions. A few things, I just have about three quick questions, I think. One is more an observation that TOT revenues have really recovered fairly robustly. And so I'm hoping that we can count on that, at least from the projection, what we're looking at. And that is also a source of revenue that we should covet a little bit more. So in all of our considerations, it can be a substantial amount of swing in that number. I do have a question or two for Ms. Chang, which park dwelling fees is problematic, at least to me as I look at this. We had budgeted for a fairly robust amount and here at the mid-year point, it's worse than anemic. Now, I understand there are timing issues on this, so I'm wondering what the prediction is, at least for the back half of the year, whether we could expect that to recover substantially.
I think I might have to defer to Steven Alvalos, but I think to your point, Mayor Proton Whitaker, park dwellings fees are not linear in nature. So if that's something that we would probably need to go back and speak with both the parks and recreation as well as community economic development to identify whether those fees are likely to come in as projected.
Yeah, it just seems unnaturally low to me at this stage. Another question that I had is water sales, where we had projected our budget really was quite robust. In fact, it represents about a 50% increase over just three years. And, but it looks like here at the midway point, again, quite anemic. So I'm wondering if we could look at a recovery in that number or not.
We do know that water usage has somewhat been down due to the pandemic and we do know that a lot, we do have some concerns with collections with respect to our utility payments as well. It would be something that we would need to circle back with the Public Works Director on and that we will incorporate both of those questions in the third quarter financial update in the next couple of months.
Thank you, I will pursue that as well, but anything you could come up with, I'd be interested in hearing about.
Yeah, go ahead, Stephen.
Also, I think with the water sales, there may be a timing issue of posting, so we'll definitely look a little further into that. But I believe some of that's probably attributed to a timing issue and that may apply to a few other funds.
Well, there's seasonality as well in this. However, this six-month period contains four months that are usually fairly high water use. So that was my concern. The second, or I'm sorry, the third thing, it's clear from your presentation that the pension liability continues to grow and we're going to require certain revenue increases to be able to keep pace with that. I'm still concerned about what we're looking at with ARPA and the fact that our number-one priority this council has identified is street repair and yet it looks like we're whittling down the amount available for that. And that's really just a statement on our priorities and the lack of follow-through on those priorities. I hear regularly from the public that streets are definitely the main issue for them. But the other issue and why I brought up the water sales is I'm hearing a lot more about the increased numbers on residential water bills as well. And so that's something for another time, I guess.
Very good, sir.
The rest could wait for another time as well, yes.
Yeah, I would just add to clarify to Mayor Proton's point. And that's part of my concern and my frustration as well. You know, we're about to talk about a proposed ARPA spending plan. Look, the reality is throughout the course of any discussions that were had on ARPA, and I think in the majority that passed the initial budget that included some of that, the priority has been, you know, investing in roads and streets. That's the public's priority. I think for a large portion of the council, that's a priority. You know, this whole kind of back and forth, it's like, hey, let's show them something else and see if we can get them to support something else. The reality is, there was a decision made, it's not, you know, monitoring the progress is certainly not the issue. I just, you know, don't want us to take our eye off of the ball or off of the target because we know it's important because we hear it from the residents so often. So anyways, those are my comments. I'd move to receive and file and approve Exhibit A.
Very good.
Second.
Do we have a second? Thank you. Please call the question.
Doesn't require an action, actually.
Even with the second, it's a receive-and-file, but the approve?
You have to approve.
And we have to approve.
Exhibit A.
Right, we do have it.
We'll do it quick, just to cover the bases, how's that? Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Whitaker.
Aye.
And Mayor Jung.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Very good, on to proposed ARPA spending plan. Director Chang, you're making the presentation again. We've had an opportunity, I think, all the council to review this, so if... I'd be grateful.
Thank you, Mayor. So as the mayor had indicated, this is a contingents item from the January 18 meeting, so I will abbreviate the presentation itself. I will begin the presentation with the recommendation that staff will be requesting this evening. I will skip presentation slides 3 through 7 as this overview of ARPA was presented at the January 18 city council meeting. I will then pivot to receiving direction as to how city council would like to obligate the remaining $16.4 million of ARPA. So at the January 18 meeting, city council ratified 11.6 million of ARPA allocation for revenue replacement, authorized city manager to manage and administer ARPA funds to comply with federal guidance, and authorized city manager, does he need, to make the necessary budget and accounting adjustments to account for and report ARPA allocation and compliance with US Treasury guidelines. Recommendation 1 here on screen requests city council obligate the remaining $16.5 million of ARPA to programs and projects areas in accordance with US Treasury guidelines and formally approve and adopt the final ARPA spending plan. The city manager has identified and prioritized projects and programs for city council consideration. These potential ARPA projects and programs will be reviewed on Slides 8 through 10. City manager and department heads are available to address any specific questions a city council makes at selections during this presentation. Recommendation 2, request city council or does he need to execute and administer agreement and issue purchase and change orders per city council approval of the ARPA spending plan within budget. Recommendation 3, request city council ratify obligation and appropriation of $2 million of this 11.6 million of ARPA allocated for revenue replacements towards water main replacements. And with that, I will go ahead and forward on to Slide 8. So the table presented on Slides 8 through 9 is an overview of the proposed spending plan in order of priority recommended by the city manager. The last column has been updated since the January 18 meeting with ARPA, which was previously obligated and appropriated by city council. Staff request city council select the desired projects and the dollar amount to be obligated against them. The proposed ARPA spending plan is organized by priority, project or program name, brief description, US Treasury category, as well as the recommended obligation amount. The identified projects and programs were selected for recommendation from the previously submitted ARPA funding project and program options presented to city council on August 17th as well as on December 7th and are included in this agenda report as attachment 2. The recommended projects can be grouped into projects that address information technology needs, street infrastructure, public safety, and provision of facilities or programs for community benefits. The largest allocation included in this spending plan is $10 million of street rehabilitation projects, which will enable the city to leverage water and sewer infrastructure improvements along with street repairs. Additionally included are projects related to public safety, including upgrades to the city's emergency operations center, a portable backup generator for use at the community center, which also serves as the city's emergency shelter, and purchase of a quid fire truck, which is already partially funded by a development project. Lastly, the final area. final area of investment relates to community benefit, projects and programs, reinstated limited service delivery at the library, facility improvements, and other funding for youth programs, and a utility subsidy for single-family residence for customers who are experiencing financial impacts from COVID. If there are no questions at this time, I would like to request City Council approval of Recommendations two and three, and then review Recommendation one using an Excel worksheet to note City Council projects and locations.
Thank you, Director Chang, for your presentation. We will now hear public comment on this item. Madam City Clerk, do we have any members of the public that wish to comment?
I have two hands raised at the moment. Jane Ranch, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you, Lucinda, and good evening once again, Mayor Jung and Council. I was just curious, I'm not seeing any funds being allotted to the library. So as you know, the library has never recovered the budget cuts from 2009, I believe it was, and I was, it sounds like there's some additional funds that can be allotted in the next section here, I believe, was referenced. If you would please consider providing additional funds to our library, especially operational funds, because, you know, the days and time are limited, the staff is reduced. That's a great city resource that really provides a benefit to everybody and anybody. I value it highly and hope that you do as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
And Jenny Matty, you should be able to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Okay. Hello, everyone. Hi, Council. My name is Jenny Matty. Just had a few questions on the ARPA funds and just some comments. Looking at the, you know, priorities here, I don't see very much funding going towards infrastructure, really. I mean, we're spending $850,000 on a fire truck, which, don't get me wrong, is definitely a priority, but when we're talking about the city's infrastructure, my father-in-law works for the Water Department. I've been a resident here for my whole life, 26 years, and, you know, he just talks about all the time how the water pipes and everything down there, sewer lines, it's just so rotted out and just horrible, that things are breaking constantly, has to get called in multiple times a week after hours during any kind of crisis. And I don't see enough money allocated to that. And going back to the first caller, the library, I mean, it's kind of ridiculous that we get the most donations for the library, yet we're not even funding that. I remember growing up in this city and doing, you know, the summer reading programs there and being really involved with the library, and the fact that it's completely diminished is, quite frankly, a lack of priority towards our youth and our children within this city, because we, you know, we want to get more families here. But how are we doing it if our library isn't even, you know, fully staffed, if our infrastructure is falling apart, you know? So I think a lot of these, you know, recommendations need to just be allocated, especially to our workers, right? Like, we are, we're diminishing our workers, and the environments that they're working in are completely unsafe. So allocating more money to that is something that I want to advocate for, right? So I know we cut 2.5% of them, their budget and everything the last time we were, you know, we were here. So please, just try to allocate more funds to make these people's job easier and allow people and families to grow and be here. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
We have no more callers.
Good. We'll return it back to council. Any comments or?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Zar. Go ahead, sir.
Yes. So I appreciate our staff working on these. I do want to clarify just one thing, I believe there are library services included in this funding, correct?
There is some. It's not the full request, but I've included some funding here.
Right.
One is for adding back the passport service, because that's actually a moneymaker, and we should be actually funding that, because that is actually a net revenue gain there.
Can we mute that caller, please?
And then the other is for our children's services librarian, and again, trying to have an opportunity to bring our children back into the library as pandemic starts waning here.
And then there's also a library employee reinstatement. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's just some of our part-time staff, just to provide some additional support. And again, this is minimal in comparison to what it would be desirable, but when we prioritize in times like this, we're dealing with, what is our core primary services? What are the critical core services we need to provide? And unfortunately, things that are very desirable get set by the wayside, like library services or recreation. I don't diminish them, I'm just saying we normally have to prioritize public safety, infrastructure, streets, water service, all those kinds of things become the critical core services we need to fund during challenging times.
Yeah, and this is the challenge when you have, you know, a city that has struggled financially, is that, you know, we need money everywhere. What I'd like, though, if possible, to know what is the actual need at the library, because I think this is where, and I appreciate you adding these, because I know we talked about this quite a bit as far as library, and I know there's a lot of need, but as a city of education and a library that provides services, what I believe are essential services, especially to low-income families and seniors of fixed income who rely on the library for, not just, it's not recreational, it is educational. And so this is.
Is that direction you're giving staff to bring that back?
Well, yes. I'd like to see what the actual need is in the library, so that we can maybe allocate some funds at a later date even to boost it up somehow. I'd like to see that happen. The other thing I just want to clarify, there is $10 million in street repairs allocated here, which I appreciate, and I think I support. That is definitely a need for our infrastructure. It's not enough, but it certainly is appreciated. So, you know, we definitely have a lot of need here, but I think you did already.
Very good.
There is also an additional $2 million of revenue replacement that we were recommending shifting over to actually water line replacement for the water line. It would be an orange thork between lemon.
Right. We see that on the.
And that is so we can spend the $1 million from the county for the street rehab in that area.
So let's make this efficient again. We've had this for a while now. I would hope every member of council here has had an opportunity to go through it and study it. So let's do this in order of if anybody has a project that they would like to approve, there is a list of these, and I'm not.
Can we, excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, look, I think the reality is, this has gotten totally convoluted, because I think you have certain people, departments, that are working to get what they want, as opposed to taking the direction of the council. And the reality is that when this budget was passed, the spirit of, the budget that was passed included really the bulk of the ARPA items that were not accounted, you know, that were not accounted for, so that dollar amount to go to road and street repairs. And so, you know, for us to get this budget that has, you know, if someone just, you know, mentioned a $10 million allocated to roads and streets, well, there's a lot more than $10 million being budgeted. And so the reality is, we should have, I mean, $10 million, wow, that's like a token, hey, here's a $10 million check for road repairs. We all know that won't go far. You know, I think at one point, we had closer to $22 million that we were talking about allocating, or 24, is that, yeah? So, you know, which is what I supported. And that was part of the compromise. And so I would like to say, I, you know, look, there's no sense in voting on this, because this isn't what was vetted over the dozens, if not hundreds, of hours of workshops and council meetings where we talked about the budget and spending. And the reality is, we need to get much more of this money towards road and street repairs, because it's what the community wants and because we owe it to the community. And not listening to them is, I think, you know, in this sense, is a complete and total failure. So, you know, that's my take on it.
Thank you, Councilman Dunlap. You know, I do have some concerns about how we are habitually reiterating the same thing. So we approved the Fullerton Community Center AV system, yet I see it again. We approved a fire truck last year, we see it again. Is this a different fire truck? And then we see the cameras again? I mean, these are constant things we're seeing again, we've already approved. Why are we looking at things over and over?
These were items that were not.
Yeah. Sorry, City Manager, so to address Mayor Jung's question, if you look on Slides eight through 10, and that very last column is the amounts that City Council has already approved, and any of those cells that are blank in that last column are areas that we're requesting direction from City Council on.
No, I understand that. What I'm saying is, why are they even on the list? We've already approved them. It almost seems that we're just doing this for the sake of doing it. Does that make sense? We've already approved this, the public's aware of it, it was in a public meeting. Why are we looking at this again, is what I'm saying? Let's get to the nitty-gritty of what's important, which are these non-budgeted items. Let's look at that so we can decide in a collective manner that's efficient, if that makes sense to everyone.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, should we go one by one, then? I mean, the ones that are blank on the right?
I'm okay with that, if you like.
All right. Well, let's start at the, right, is this the list we're going to fill out right here? Is the right column?
This is, to Mayor Jung's point, this list here that's in a spreadsheet form is what has not yet been approved by City Council. This is not in the order of the City Manager's recommended priority, but we're happy to, I'm happy to toggle between either item.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Proton. Go ahead, sir.
I would be much in favor of having this formatted in the way that you are prescribing and bringing it back to our next meeting. I would make a motion to that effect.
And I would second that, sir.
Yeah, I would support that.
Will this impact any other timing issue or? Okay, I'm just trying to verify here.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Whitaker.
Aye.
And Mayor Jung.
Aye, thank you.
Passes unanimously. Continue.
And we've got a 2022 Safe and Sane Fireworks Sales presentation, but I know that we're pretty familiar with this. Madam City Clerk, I'm going to give you a brief. If you want to limit your presentation, you're happy to do so.
I am so happy to limit this presentation. Let's see how quickly I can do it for you. Fireworks come before City Council every year for the sale of Safe and Sane fireworks. As always, we are requesting that the council approve the annual report from the previous year, approve the timeline for this year, which generally is lottery applications in March. The lottery drawing will occur in May, and the fireworks sales will occur July 1st through the 4th. Yes, and the new twist for this year is a request that was submitted late last year by Mayor Jung to reserve five of the 15 lottery spots for the youth sports groups. And staff proposes, if you choose to do those five slots, that you would basically hold two different lotteries. One lottery where we draw just the youth sports groups, we draw five names out of that batch, and also another five that would be alternates just for youth sports, and then do the same thing with 10 slots for the non-youth sports organizations. And in that annual report, if you really wanted to dig into the numbers, there is historic information. You can see how many groups applied, what category they're in, what percentage they are, et cetera. That helps your decision at all.
Thank you. We'll now hear public comments on this item. Is there any members of the public that wish to comment?
Pull that screen up. I see, speaking slowly, just in case, I see no hands raised.
Very good. I'll bring it back to council. If somebody wants to make a motion.
I'll move the item.
I'll second.
And Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Whitaker.
Aye.
Mayor Jung.
Aye.
This will pass, and if it's okay with the council, we will get Councilmember Zara's vote when he returns.
When he returns, yes, indeed. And next up is the City Council meeting start time change. We considered that at the last meeting, but we were missing a council member, so we're going to do this again. Obviously, there is, if there's a presentation that needs to be made, I'm happy to hear it, but if not, we'll just go straight to public comment. And here's our Councilman Zar. Councilman Zar, on the fireworks, sir, we need your vote. Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. So if there's no presentation that's needed, we'll hear from the members of the public.
And this is for the council meeting time change item. I see no hands raised on Zoom.
Very good. We'll bring this back to council. I'll seek a motion.
And so just to clarify, we're looking to change the meetings?
5:30, sir.
5:30, yeah, okay.
I'll move the item.
Yeah, I, just so I can finish my comments, I don't, that, to me, is too early, just because, you know, one of our jobs is to allow the public to comment, and moving it up early may prevent some of that. And like I said last time, we, Fullerton did have earlier meetings, but back when former mayors, actually Sean Nelson and my wife Sharon, they were having a hard time getting here for the earlier meetings. So they were one of the groups that shifted it to later. So 5:30 is too early to, I think, for all our residents and myself, especially if we have a close session. So I would say no later than, I mean, this would be something that I can support. Yeah.
Any other council comments?
I would just add, I'm supportive of the 5:30. Did some research myself as to what some of the nearby council meetings routinely start at. You've got Anaheim that starts at 5:00, you've got Buena Park that starts at 5:00. You have some that start earlier, some that start later, but, you know, generally around Orange and sort of the, I guess, perimeter LA County cities, you know, you've got about 5:45 to 5:50 is sort of an average start time. And so I think the reality is, look, with some of the adjustments that have been made to, through state legislation, allowing for, you know, virtual meetings, and certainly allowing for, or sort of the discretion that is offered to council with respect to public comments, I actually think there's ways to improve and enhance, you know, the public comment process, not just here in person, but by way of kind of electronic means. And so the reality is, I think this is a good opportunity for us to sort of revisit how meetings are conducted, and actually how to make them, you know, more efficient, more effective, and allow more people to participate in the process. So I'm supportive of the 5:30 start time.
Good. And Councilman Zar, I know you.
Yes, no, I cannot support this, because I think even with Zoom, even with technology, people are either still at work or on their way back from work. And so I think this is, it doesn't matter what other cities are doing. I think what matters is what we feel is right to, for our community. And I know that I've spoken to a lot of people, and we see it from the past experience of people coming to councils. People want to go home and relax and rest and feed their kids, and then come back to council. I think 6:30 is an appropriate time, and it's tested. And this is purely just out of convenience for this council, and I don't support that.
Mr. Mayor Proton, any comments, sir?
Well, I'm concerned about not having the public able to join us in chambers, and I'd like to see us revisit that notion whenever possible. I don't personally favor the idea of moving this earlier, but I will certainly support the mayor's discretion on this.
Very good. We have a motion from Councilman Dunlap. You have a second for me. So please call the question.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
No.
Councilmember Zara.
No.
Mayor Proton Whitaker.
Aye.
And Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Mayor Jung.
It's no problem. Aye.
Three to two, so.
And will that go into effect next meeting?
We didn't put an effective date in the reso, so I would assume that by default it would be the next meeting.
Can, could we hold off for a month, maybe, or a couple of meetings, just so that we can announce it a couple of times?
We discussed it, two meetings in a row, sir. I think that's plenty of announcement, don't you?
Well, we discussed it, but we didn't vote today. That's right.
Well, it was, it's my understanding it was delayed from the last meeting that started at that time, so you could really debate that all around. I think at this point, the agenda has not been published for the next meeting, so the reality is, I think, people that would need to make adjustments in their schedule to be there to speak would have, you know, have more than enough time to do that, so.
Well, the reality is, we just voted on it today, though. We discussed it prior, but we never took action, so.
All right. Next item is authority to call teleconference legislative body meetings.
Move approval.
In a nutshell, we have a resolution that allows teleconference meetings. We did not include in that resolution who has the authority to call for those teleconference meetings, and whether the public can be in chambers or not. We've sort of, by practice, been doing mayor, city manager in consultation with each other, so we'd like to formalize whatever the council would like to put in place.
Thank you. So I had asked that Madam City Clerk and our Mr. City Manager place this on the agenda. So I had asked that Madam City Clerk and our Mr. City Manager place this on the agenda. I had taken the liberty as mayor to take our public's health into mind, and our staff, and go remote, and a hybrid that we are on right now. But I wanted to make sure that it was important to me personally, that we involved all of our council. That's why it sits on the agenda today, so we have a robust discussion, and we can make the decision accordingly as a council collectively. So, we'll hear public comment on the item. Is there any members of the public that wish to comment?
And we have no hands raised in Zoom on this item.
So we'll bring this back to council. I know that Mayor Protem, you had, you had some comments you want to make, you want to, would you like to go now, or should I come back to you, sir?
I don't want to rail on it or anything, but to the extent possible, I believe it's very important that we allow the public to attend meetings.
Councilman Zara, any comments, sir?
I mean, historically, it's been the mayor and the city manager that make the determination, it is the privilege of the mayor to oversee the body here in the meeting, so I don't mind keeping it as it is.
Very well, and Councilman Silva, any comments on this?
No, you know, to be consistent, we'll keep it as is, and just formalize it.
Very good, so we can have a motion to designate the authority as being the mayor and the city manager.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Very good, please call the question.
Councilmember Dunlap?
Aye.
Councilmember Silva?
Aye.
Councilmember Zara?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Whitaker?
Aye.
And Mayor Jung?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
And our final item of the agenda, that's not consent calendar item, is the annual review of rules and procedures and decorum for our city council meeting. Again, we had a council member absent, and thus, we could not come to any resolution on the matter, but we do have that council member here. So, we'll, I don't think anybody needs a presentation, so if we can, we'll go directly to public comment on this item.
And we do have one hand raised. Jane Reifer, you should, there you are.
Yes, hello, this is Jane Reifer again, and thank you very much. I, my questions sort of remain from the last meeting. One is, I know there's going to be a new registration system for public speakers, or members of the public who want, who wish to speak, could that be described a little bit, so that we understand what the procedure will be? I heard it described as it will be an electronic registration, but is it emailed to us, do we have to come to City Hall and press, you know, press a screen? Do we do it through Zoom? Do we, can we do it through Zoom if we're using only the phone to access Zoom, et cetera? So could that be described to us, so we'll understand what the, what is being discussed? And then also, regarding consent, although I'm lucky enough to know most of you, and able to text, or call, or email, and you're very responsive, and I very much appreciate that, but I don't think the general public knows how to get ahold of our council members properly. In fact, the agenda actually lists the wrong email, it doesn't go through to you. So I don't know how they will know how to be in touch, if they have an item that they have inside information, and would like to, you know, convey to you to help in decisions. So that's my concern about not allowing the public to pull consent item. And I think we do it with respect, we do our research, we're not doing it for, you know, whimsical reasons. So I'd like to have that remain a public, I guess, privilege. And if you do pass it, it's unclear in the staff report whether the public would be able to ask, make a public comment if a council member pulls the item. Does that make, does that question make sense? In other words, if a council member does pull the item, will it still be public comment in that situation? So thank you for these three issues, thanks so much.
Thank you, next caller, please.
And I see no other hands raised.
All right, we'll bring this back to council. Again, this has been discussed already. The two major changes that are impacted, if there are even changes at all, is, one, the public being able to pull consent calendar items. This is an advocacy of the public to contact their elected official directly. Anyone who contacts me and says they'd like an item pulled, I'm happy to do that. That's already happened many a times, so that's one. And secondly, to make sure that the public, when we do have in-person public council meetings, that they fill out the council form until this voter, and this, till this registration process becomes online, that we, we have that. So it's just to, you know, again, to streamline an opportunity for us as council members to follow up, and do what we have to do, and have due diligence with our public. So if there's any further comments from the rest of the council? Yes, Mr. Councilman Silva?
Yeah, just to, I guess, to respond to Ms. Reifer, is, so if we keep this hybrid method, are they, are they gonna email the clerk to say they want to sign up for an item, or how is that gonna be done, I guess, if we can?
It would basically be what we're doing right now. With COVID, we went paperless, we got rid of the speaker forms, and people in person were checking in, in this, with my staff at the city manager's office, and we continue that, and we would still see the hands in Zoom.
Okay, and then the second question, yeah, if we pull an item, then the public will be able to speak on it, correct? I mean, just to verify, all right, thank you.
All right, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just for the record, I, I believe, you know, we, our job is to facilitate and to make it easier for people to participate, and to feel engaged, and by, by doing, disallowing them to pull directly, we are putting one more obstacle in the way of people to participate in, in civic government, and I would not be supportive of this, I just wanted to say that for the record.
Very well, sir. Mr. Mayor Protem?
The only proviso that I would have, I'm happy to support it, but on occasion, we have fairly controversial items that are put on consent calendars, and they just beg to be pulled. And so I would be in favor of a little more consideration of what should be discussion items, and shouldn't be out-of-the-gate consent items. If we could modify that, then I think it would work very well.
I would tend to agree with you on that, sir. I would seek a motion from council?
Yeah, I'd support that, and I would just add, you know, look, in my own advocacy efforts, you know, not just here in Fullerton and other cities, you know, I can add that, you know, you're, there's often, there's a, there's a dialogue, you know, leading up to a council meeting, where you're, you know, talking to staff, you're talking to council members, trying to get support, trying to kind of take the temperature, so to speak, on the issue that's important to you. And so I think, you know, the reality is, you know, if, if we're really taking steps to remove, you know, these barriers to civic engagement, I think that starts with, you know, sort of a dialogue or conversation ahead of time. I know we're, you know, my contact information is public, I know anybody that calls City Hall to find out how to get ahold of me, gets my cellphone, and often rings through to me, so whether it's email or telephone calls, you know, this is correspondence that I'm getting, you know, really on top of some of the social media stuff. And so I think, you know, the reality is, today's day and age, you know, there's no reason to have to wait for a meeting to do that. I think you can easily reach out to someone and communicate with them ahead of time to share your concerns, so, you know, I support, support the item.
And just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, if I may, up, when we, I mean, a resident can come right at the time of the consent calendar and ask us to pull it, and we can pull it.
That's correct.
So it doesn't mean they have to do it ahead of time.
It doesn't interrupt that process, indeed.
Right, yeah, okay, just want to clear that, all right, thank you.
If we can have a motion from council?
So moved.
Councilmember Dunlap?
Okay, second, I'm sorry.
I'll second, sure.
Very well. Madam City Clerk, would you be kind enough to call the rule?
Councilmember Dunlap?
Aye.
Councilmember Silva?
Yes.
Councilmember Zara?
No.
Mayor Protem Dun, uh, Mayor Protem, who are you? Mayor Protem Whitaker, sorry, we reverted to last year. And Mayor Jung?
Aye.
Passes four to one.
And then we'll move back to the consent calendar item, number three was pulled by Ms. Reifer. If we can have Ms. Reifer ask the question that she's curious about, or have a request, that'd be great.
Jane, you should be okay to unmute.
Okay, great, good evening again. You know, I wanted originally to ask you to postpone the approval on this until a missing study could be completed. It's actually a fairly simple missing study, and it would have, if, if it were to find an effect, it would have a pretty valuable insight for the city, and it would allow cost sharing on something that otherwise will have to be borne only by the city. And this is regarding the hub project. And I was dismayed over the past few weeks in the council sessions and so forth, to see that people did not understand that there are two studies that the city usually does when there's a transportation project, a transportation result of a project, that you do an environmental study that talks about environmental impacts and mitigations, that the, the, the project had increased trip generation numbers when it, when the parking was reduced, believe it or not, it's how things work, it was unusual, but that's what happened. And so they did do a study for the environmental mitigations with the new numbers, and found out that there was no impact. However, they did not do the second typically required study, which is what's called an LOS, and that talks about the consistency with the general plan, and that tells the city if there's going to be a real effect on the ground to transportation. Again, it's called an effect on transportation. So even if you don't do this tonight, please remember in the future to always ask for the effect on transportation, because that's where the city will do cost sharing for those kinds of things. That was not done on this study. I did try to get ahold, and no one called me afterwards to say, it's this, it's that, whatever, I tried to get ahold of people and find out more. My understanding of this simple recalculation is that it perhaps does not apply here, because those numbers were not reduced, were not increased in the peak hours. So I understand that, but I would like our city to be more careful about these types of things, because we are skipping over where we can have developments pay for the costs that they induce. I think that's only fair. Um, let's see here, at this, I mean, on the same project, I'm still interested in the air filtration, air filtration and the active transportation, things which Mayor Jung, you were so kind as to push on, but I didn't see them officially recorded anywhere, so if we can be, that can be verified, that would be great. Um, and then in the future, please do, do indicate in the studies why something wasn't done, rather than make, you know, for instance, me, I had to call transportation engineer, I had to call around, I found out that we don't have a city engineer anymore, I just found that out today, all kinds of different things, I had to go through a lot.
Thank you very much.
Try and find out.
Director Foss, do you have any answers for the caller with regards to some of her concerns, sir?
Excuse me, the speaker is generally correct, and if you may recall, this project was revised since its initial proposal that was submitted to the Planning Commission. It was actually reduced in density from 420 units to 377. When the council actually reviewed the project at its last meeting, there was an addendum to the environmental that addressed the increase in, in trips, weekday trips, and indicating that there would be no impact to the environment as a result of the increase. That addendum sheet did not address the LOS version, and what the speaker is referencing. However, I did consult with the traffic, the city's traffic engineer on that, and given the minimal increase in the amount of weekday traffic, the impacts to LOS is, would be very insignificant and would not change. So, so therefore, I think you can go ahead and move with the project as, as, as recommended. I take to heart her comment about in the future, making sure, especially with projects being revised, to continue to follow that revision in both the LOS and VMT review, so.
Very good, sir. Any council comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to move the item.
So move.
Please call the question.
With the second?
No.
They get the masks on, sometimes it's hard to tell. Okay, thank you. So, motion by Silva, second by Zara. Councilmember Dunlap?
Aye.
Councilmember Silva?
Aye.
Councilmember Zara?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Whitaker?
Aye.
And Mayor Jung?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
That concludes our regularly scheduled meeting, at the request of our fellow Councilman Zara. We will close this meeting in honor of Mr. Mike Clements. God bless his soul.